Good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lou Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor Orrell. Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Happy Pride, everyone. Thank you and welcome to chambers. I know that we have a presentation today by Counselor Santana. We also have another group visiting us here, the International Visitor Leadership Program, VLP Group, titled Transparency and Accountability in Government. And the 24 visitors from around the world accompanied by your four liaisons are here in the city of Boston to enhance their understanding of ethical systems for accountability and transparency in government in the United States. So just wanted to say welcome to all of you for being here with us. I am now going to turn it over to Counselor Murphy to introduce today's invocation from Julianne Doherty Lee, the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ+ Advancement. So Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So everyone may not know this, but the councilors get four council meetings a year where we can call in clergy or someone to open up the meeting. And I thought, who better to ask in June to kick us off a Pride Month but Julianne? So I will just introduce Julianne and share some of the wonderful things that make her so special here in the city. So as we gather during Pride Month, it's my honor to welcome a dedicated leader who has tirelessly worked to make Boston a more inclusive and affirming city for all. Julianne Doherty Lee, Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ+ Advancement. A proud Boston native and alum of Boston Public Schools, Julianne's journey in public service began as one of the city's first LGBTQ+ liaisons in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. She later served as the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Coordinator for six years, emphasizing the importance of community and grassroots advocacy. Her commitment to uplifting marginalized voices continued as the Director of Outreach and Engagement at the City of Boston's Aid Strong Commission, focusing on engaging the most isolated communities. Now, proud to say she's been leading for a while now, the Office of LGBTQ+ Advancement, Julianne and her dynamic team develop and implement policies and programs that promote the rights and dignity of our community. Her work ensures that our city's policies reflect the diversity and strength of our community. Beyond her professional achievements, Julianne is a devoted family person who enjoys, well, some personal things, well, she obviously enjoys her wife and her daughter and her wonderful mother and family. But swimming on the Cape, discussing Star Wars is something that was very special to her with her dad. And if we could just take a moment, your dad has recently passed, which I know is hard, but keep her family in your prayers for her for that. Exploring new Korean restaurants with her wife's soul and sharing joyful moments with her daughter Hopper. So please join me in welcoming Julianne in opening our meeting today. Thank you.
I have worked in city government for 18 years, and I've never had a bio read before I spoke. So sorry, that was unexpected. Hi, everyone. Happy Pride. My name is Julianne Lee, and my pronouns are she, they. I serve as the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of LGBT+ Advancement, and I am just part of the incredible team that I have asked to stand behind me today. Justice Kimberly Viola, thank you so much for all you do every single day. It is my honor to use my privilege to hand you the mic every single day. I am so thankful to be here with all of you at the beginning of Pride Month, a time to celebrate strength, beauty, and resilience of our LGBTQIA2S+ communities and focus on the work left ahead. And I just want to take a second to please look around the room. What an incredible, amazing group of people. Legacy makers, change makers. I was keeping a list of the names to read off, and I ran out of space on my paper. I really want to read some names. I'm deeply grateful to the city counselor for your continued support, all of our councilors, especially for today's Pride events and throughout the month, for doing things behind closed doors all the time for our community. Thank you for affirming Boston as a city where we are all welcomed, valued, and seen for making space for us, not just this month, but all year long. Boston's LGBTQIA2S+ community is not monolithic. As we celebrate Pride Month, we also uplift Immigrant Heritage Month. We are strongest at our intersections. We must continue to center our work on ensuring that Black and Brown, LGBTQ+, trans, non-binary residents are woven into the very fabric of Pride every day, 365. As many of you know, James Baldwin was an openly LGBTQ+ writer living through civil rights era. In an interview, someone once asked Baldwin to describe the challenges he faced, starting out as, quote, "a Black impoverished homosexual." Baldwin laughed and said, "I thought I hit the jackpot." He had every reason to be afraid, and yet he wasn't. In honor of that spirit and the spirit that fills this council chambers today and all of you watching at home, in honor of the depth of our intersectional work together, I want to share 10 seconds from one of Baldwin's lesser-known poems. Before I read, I invite you, community, our leaders, to take a moment with me. Let's relax our shoulders. For me, unclenching my jaw, removing my tongue from the roof of my mouth, it just goes right up there every single time. Think about where you're holding that tension. Keep your feet on the floor. Think about where it is in your body. Let it go, just for a second. Let's take a deep collective breath together, one time. It's interesting to remind each other the power of collective love. Let's listen together. Some days leave, some days grieve, some days you almost don't believe, some days believe you, and some days don't. Some days believe you and you won't. Some days worry, some days mad, some days more than make you glad. Some days, some days, more than shine, witnesses, witnesses, coming on down the line. I am so lucky to do this work with each of you, every single one of you, our legacy makers, our change makers. Let's continue the work. Let's take care of each other. Happy Pride, and thank you so much for walking with us 365.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. We will now be moving on to presentations. We have one presentation from Counselor Santana celebrating Pride Month. Counselor Santana, you have the floor in five minutes. Five minutes.
Five minutes, all right. Good afternoon, everyone. I would love to be able to invite our speakers and the amazing group that we have here. And please come up to the stage right here, and I'm going to call our existence.
Is resistance.
Our existence.
Is resistance.
Our existence.
Is resistance.
Thank you. And again, good afternoon. I'm not going to speak very long. I believe that this time should be used by our amazing speakers. So I'm actually just going to yield my time. I just want to say happy pride, everyone. Today, in this month, and every day throughout the year is a moment to celebrate our community, our LGBTQIA2S+ community. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it over to Brian, who's going to speak, and then it's going to be followed by Sal, Shawna, Brielle, Jamone, and Sister Brother Freddie. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Brian Blaisdell. I'm from Roxbury, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here for the opportunity to share with you some of my personal experiences as a formerly homeless transgender person in Boston, as well as some of my concerns. At the beginning of it all, I can remember most clearly the way I had felt, alone, hopeless, afraid. I was afraid of things like not knowing where I'd sleep at night, if inside at all, and especially afraid of not figuring out how to move forward. I felt stuck. There were a number of factors that made getting through this time increasingly difficult, such as my chronic medical issues, and most notably, my identity as a transgender man. I'll say that I do have deep concerns for the disabled as well as the LGBTQ population. I fear that the system we have in place currently does not consider the stories of all different types of people. I think it's important to ensure that we address these issues that allow marginalized people to fall through the cracks and to be left behind. As a city, we should be unified in our shared goal to protect and to support those who are currently struggling in desperate financial circumstances. These populations tend to be more at risk of facing these dire consequences. In fact, the National Alliance to End Homelessness found that LGBTQ youth are disproportionately represented within the homeless population, with estimates between 11% and 40% of homeless youth identifying as such. It's important that we work towards adopting a system that accounts for all types of stories, including those that could be considered unconventional. I emphasize that the transgender population is made up of people living, breathing, people with hopes, passions, and needs, just as yourselves. We should not look to the interests of this crowd as outliers or see them as of any less My experience in homelessness, for example, is not a traditional one, as opposed to the standard hypothetical story that these systems have been built upon. To preface, my birth given name had still been my legal name at the time, so my ID and all my documents had still communicated that I was a woman to whomever could read them. I remember the first shelter that I had started out with had been the Southampton Street Shelter, and it was an all-men's shelter. Aside from being trans, the shelter in on its own was in seriously horrible conditions. It had people packed tight to the walls with little to no breathing room, including many seemingly intoxicated people of varying degrees and conditions. It was nauseatingly dirty. People were on edge, understandably, and it was a very unwelcoming environment. When I was checked in, my shelter ID that they printed for me displayed my birth name, indicating that I'm trans to others. I hid this while I was there and personally felt comfortable denying others' interactions with me. However, I can only imagine how this may have gone over for some other people that may have been in the situation at the time. It also raised some questions to me because of my past experiences about how other trans people would be placed. Historically, in Massachusetts facilities where transgender people had been housed, like psychiatric units and group homes, I'd been afforded privileges that other trans people had not. This was due to me being able to pass as a cisgender man to most people if I had chosen not to disclose. It was apparent that this was the reason that I had been allowed to reside in men's spaces instead of women's. It was apparent because the other trans people would be forced into the spaces of their birth sex, while I had been given the freedom to choose in most spaces. The only difference being that in these scenarios, I had been the only person who wasn't immediately recognized to be trans. This long record of apparent favoritism in the past had made me worry what would happen in the situation that a nonpassing trans person had been in my place. I'd imagine it could be extremely dangerous and potentially more frightening for them from even what I had to experience. I think these are questions that must be raised when it comes to our homeless crisis within the city, the most necessary being, how can we ensure that all transgender people, regardless of things like passability, can feel safe and comfortable? This is especially important, given the current political climate with LGBTQ issues becoming exceedingly divisive within mainstream discourse. My example is one of many, many issues that the homeless system poses for trans people. It can be seriously dangerous to not address these problems preemptively, as it could result in even fatal consequences. I strongly and fully advocate for, with my entire being, that we take the time to address these concerns with extreme diligence and compassion. Thank you for your time and attention.
I want to welcome up Sal next.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before I introduce myself, let me remind everyone that Pride was a riot. It was a protest. Let's not forget the many sacrifices our great ancestors have given, like Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, and in Boston, our own Javier Dalto. Happy Pride, everyone, here at the Boston City Hall and those watching from home. My name is Sal Khan, and I use all pronouns. I'm an openly queer migrant activist and a former journalist from Pakistan, here to tell a story of sacrifice, resilience, and hope. I come from a world where my experience, where my existence is not possible, where my love is seen as a sin punishable, as a crime. For some who I love, it warrants a death penalty. Growing up queer in Pakistan meant living in constant fear of violence, exposure, and erasure. As a young journalist, I tried to expose injustice, but I couldn't safely speak my own truth. The silence nearly broke me. I had no choice but to leave. When I come to America, I hoped for a fresh start, a place where I could be safe, give back to the community, be accepted, live freely, and build a future, maybe even, you know, fall in love along the way. Instead, I found a different set of challenges and struggles. Familyalabuse being unhoused, queerphobia, racism, the words of broken immigration system. Still, I've made Boston home. I've worked hard as an essential worker in industries from retail to healthcare to art spaces and volunteered from homeless shelters to food drives. I've studied psychology at Bunker Hill and recently graduated with an associate. My dream is to become a therapist one day, and as a workhorse, I'd go, I paid taxes, obtained asylum, and served my community. Despite all this, I was sent to an detention center at Plymouth last year after medical emergency in I experienced on an MBTA bus in Malden. I endured 57 days of horrible subhuman treatment. I feared for myself, because for me, and for a lot of us, deportation is a death sentence. These 57 days were the hardest part of my life so far. I was purposely isolated from my loved ones, who thought I had died. There were times when I wished I had to, and I tried to even, but I realized somewhere someone like me is thinking the same thing. I don't want to end my story and encourage many other voiceless siblings to do the same. So I survived, and I was really thanked to the community that stood up for me, which resisted. For a lot of us, intersectionalities in the Buzzwood is a daily reality. I know what it is like to be queer, brown, immigrant, neurodivergent, working poor, unheard and unseen. That's why I founded Out Newcomers, a grassroots community organization for LGBT migrants. We try our best to, despite limited resources, to connect refugees, LGBT migrants, to legal help, housing, and mental health support. But more than that, we build solidarity in times like these. We don't just need services, we need each other. The city of Boston has taken some powerful steps recently, like becoming a sanctuary city for LGBTQ people and dedicating funds for our queer and trans community. But we need to do more. What action we take today will impact our lives and our present and our future. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts must ensure legal defense for asylum seekers, invest in transitional housing for queer asylum seekers, and also community-led programs that understand the unique trauma we carry. Because, as I said, for many of us, deportation isn't a displacement, it's a death sentence. Let's be clear, the return of the Trump administration is a deadly threat to trans and queer people, here in our beloved city, in our great state, and around the world. So right now, at this moment, I ask you to do more than just listen, organize with us, fight with us, and stand with LGBT community. Stand with LGBT people in all its diversity, bravery, beauty, even with LGBT migrants, because our safety is a right, it's a human right. We are not disposable. I would end my speech with a beautiful and brave quote by Marsha P. Johnson. You never completely have your rights to one person until you all have your rights. All our struggles are interconnected. Let us work together to save our great nation, strengthen our communities and cities, and build a better world. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for inviting me, especially City Counselor Henry Santana and staff, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at the People's Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. I think we're a minute two out of the five. Thank you, Sal. I think it wouldn't be a presentation or a Henry Santana presentation if we didn't have you speakers, right? You all know that I really care about our youth, so I'm going to introduce Shawna as our next speaker.
Hello, hi. A little nervous. My name is Shawna Moon. I'm 25 years old. I go to Roxbury Community College. Being a part of Boston Lesbian Urban Foundation has changed my life. I came out as queer at 19 years old. This was during the pandemic where things were closed and shut down. I felt, I felt really alone. I wasn't in school at the time or working. Things started to really progress for me over time. I went to RCC around 2023 and went to my first LGBTQ club where I met Mateo, Keisha. I was really interested in finding mentorship, community. I connected with two mentors. They were Black, queer, female, Jackie and Sapphire. I appreciate the love the mentorship has really poured into me. I got to experience life, you know, goals, trips, lunches, gossip conversations. My experience has been a muse for me to continue to be myself, be out and proud, and pursue my dreams as an artist and filmmaker. I say all this to say it's important that Black queer youth need community and love because we're the ones that experience double oppression, being Black and queer. And yeah, hardships sometimes. We are beautiful human beings and amazing people, intelligent, smart, like, just fabulous. Black, yeah. Thank you, Blue. Thank you, Curtis. Thank you, Keisha. Thank you, Mateo. Thank you, Sapphire, Jackie, you know who you are. Thank you all.
Our existence is resistance.
Is resistance.
Our existence is resistance. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shawna. I'm going to bring up Brielle next.
How does this work? Hello.
Hello.
Hola.
Hola.
Sorry if you heard that. I'm so sorry. Hi, my name is Brielle. My pronouns are they/them. Since becoming a part of Blue, I've experienced something I didn't think it was possible. For me, for a long time, being accepted as I am, for most of my life, I felt like I had to put a facade to perform a version of myself just to get by. I didn't often see people like me or feel safe enough to show up authentically. At home, things haven't always been easy. Being who I truly am isn't always meant with understanding and support. Okay, met with support, and that's something that's been hard to carry. But Blue has become a space where I can breathe. Here, I found a kind of freedom I didn't have before, a freedom to express myself, to learn and unlearn. It's a place where I feel like I can belong, even when I can't feel that way at home. One of the most powerful parts of my journey has been connecting with my mentor, with them. I don't have to wear a mask, even though I'm wearing one right now, or pretend to be someone I'm not. I can talk openly about my identity, my struggles, and my growth, and I'm met with nothing but support and understanding. That kind of relationship has been rare for me, and it's made a huge impact on how I see myself. I'm still growing, still educating myself, and still figuring things out, but I know that when I am validated, I'm demisexual and I'm non-binary, and I don't have to hide Sorry. And there's nothing wrong with me, and thanks to Blue, I found a place where I can finally start believing in that.
We have two more speakers. So next up, we have Jamone.
Please come up.
Hey, guys, how are you doing?
Yes.
My name is Jamone Gilchrist. I am a current mentee at the Blue Mentorship Program. I attend at Roxbury Community College, and my major that I'm focusing on is visual arts because I love to draw. The reason I joined this program is because my friend told me that they have mentors that helps their mentees, whether it's mental health, financial issues, or anything, and that's how I got into the program. And then, once he told me that it was for the LGBTQ community, I was thinking, hmm, why not join them? Just to give them more support. The highlights from my experience with Blue is I enjoy my outing for my mentor, which is Lala. And we get to play some fun games at the arcade at Dave &amp; Buster's, and we did the same thing at Lucky Strike, which was a few months ago, and we also enjoyed eating some foods. Another highlight I want to point out is the Christmas karaoke, where we got to sing our favorite songs, and we got to play some board games and got our Christmas gifts. I'm very proud to say that I got to know every person that opened up about their stories and their sexuality, and I feel like everyone, everyone in this room, whether we're gay, straight, bisexual, or even trans. we're gay, straight, bisexual, or even trans, and anybody, that we deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. And on that note, happy Pride. Speech adjourned.
There you go. Thank you. I did not tell them to do that. Sorry, Madam President. Next up, and final speaker, we have Sister Brother Freddie.
Hello again. I won't be following those speeches with a speech of my own. I am here to read just some of the over 45 organizations that are represented here today. So in recognition, you have before you Help by AMG. Well, now you have to cheer for everyone. Chastity Bowick Consulting and Talent. The Boston Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence. Out Newcomers. Pride in Our Workplace. Pride in Plasma. Break Time. Out in Finance. Boston Lesbian Urban Foundation. Mass Now. The Massachusetts Commission on LGBTQ+ Youth. The Fems. Sweeties. The History Project. The Transgender Emergency Fund. Boston Glass. Jacques Cabaret. Resbos, the Boston Lesbian Newsletter. QTC Boston. Pride Sports Boston. The Theater Offensive. LGBTQ+ Senior Housing and the Pride. MRKH Organization. Queer in Cannabis. Q Calendar. Splash Zone. Lavender Education. Planning with a Scorpio. Bagley. The QT Library. LGBTQ+ Elders of Color. Greater Boston P Flag. Bisexual Resource Center. Boston Gamers. Ethos. Stonewall Sports Boston. The Boston Primetimers. The Boston Theater Company. MAP for Health. Fenway Health. The Network La Red. Boston's Mayor Office of LGBTQIA2S Plus Advancement. New England Trans Sanctuary. New England ACES. GLAD Law. BU Queer Activist Collective. The Queer Scouts. The City of Cambridge LGBTQ+ Commission. They don't even go here. Yes. The Boston Foundation. Mass Equality. Danny's Queer Bar. Pleasure Pie. Mermaid for Pleasure. And Boston Pride for the People. Thank you.
Awesome. I think I still have three minutes. Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President, for allowing us to go a little bit over time. I would love to invite my colleagues up for a picture, and anyone who's not on the crowd, please come up if you want to be part of the picture as well. Thank you, everyone. Happy Pride.
Pride.
You need to be in the front of that outfit.
It's been their needs.
Everyone else, welcome.
It's a capacity.
picture.
Happy Pride.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Happy Pride. Counselor Santana, I have no idea how you did that in five minutes, but that was pretty incredible for five minutes. We are now going to continue with our council meeting. We are now going to continue with our council meeting. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Clerk, could you please update the attendance record to reflect that Councilors Brayden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, and Counselor Weber are now with us? And Counselor, oh, and Counselor, I don't, they're not here, so. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And thank you again, Counselor Santana, for that presentation, and thank you, Counselor Brayden, also for all of your leadership on all things Pride here in the city. Okay. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of May 21, 2025. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the May 21 meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1132?
Docket number 1132, message not authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1 million in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Nutrition Services Incentive Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund the Age Strong Commission's nutrition program that delivers meals to homes of older adults and at congregate sites in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Could you please amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Fernand Anderson is now present and with us? Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Clerk, for reading that. I am asking that my colleagues support me in suspending and passing this. It's a million-dollar grant, but I think it's important that we get this passed quickly. I actually submitted a $2 million grant in support of senior nutrition, not a grant, but an amendment during the amendment process, so I know we all want to make sure that our seniors and our Age Strong Commission has the money they need to continue to support our seniors, so I'm asking to suspend and pass it.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Seats passed to this million-dollar grant. Does anyone have any comments, or would anyone like to speak on this matter? Okay, thank you. Counselor Murphy seeks to spend and pass this docket, docket number 1132. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, I just want to ensure that I'm not missing anyone from the attendance record.
Just Counselor Warhol.
Yeah, when they return. Okay, great. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1133?
Docket number 1133, message not authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $550,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Cummings Foundation. The grant will fund the city of Boston's violence prevention work, including activations, events, community outreach, block parties, and the Youth Options Unlimited Program, and other efforts consistent with the city's summer safety plan and plan to end violence.
Thank you. Docket number 1133 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read dockets number 1134 and 1135?
Docket number 1134, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F regarding towing contracts for District 1, filed and passed by the council on April 9, 2025.
Thank you. Dockets number 1134 and 1135 will be placed on file. Okay, can you read, sorry, can you read docket number 1135?
Docket number 1135, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F regarding certain information pertaining to White Stadium, filed on May 5, 2025.
Thank you. Dockets number 1134 and 1135 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1136?
Docket number 1136, communication was received from the city clerk, transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for city council action on the designation of the Old Corner Bookstore in Cunningham House, 277 through 283 Washington Street and 3-11 School Street, Boston, Mass., as a landmark, in effect after June 30, 2025, if not acted upon.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. The Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. As the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, I'm in strong support of the Boston Landmarks Commission's unanimous decision to designate the Old Corner Bookstore in Cunningham House, which is 277 through 283 Washington Street and 3-11 School Street, as an official Boston landmark. Built in 1718, the Old Corner Bookstore is Boston's oldest commercial building. It houses one of the most important publishing houses in the 19th century, Tickner &amp; Fields. From this very corner, iconic works like The Scarlet Letter, Walden, Uncle Tom's Cabin were introduced to the world. Emerson, Thoreau, Dickens, Alcott, and Stowe all passed through its doors. It wasn't just a bookstore, it was the beating heart of American literature. And just next door, the Cunningham House, built around 1728, represents a rare surviving example of Georgian brick architecture in downtown Boston. Together, these two buildings embody nearly three centuries of Boston's evolving identity, from a puritan outpost to publishing powerhouse, to the resilient, culturally rich city we are today. In 1960, these buildings were slated for demolition to make way for a parking garage. It was the people of Boston who stepped in to save them. It was one of the city's first acts of preservation. It was also an affirmation that history has value, that it deserves not only to be remembered, but to be lived in and around. These buildings are still active commercial spaces. They house restaurants and offices. They are part of the pedestrian experience along the Freedom Trail. They are not museums behind glass. They are active participants in our downtown fabric. The proposed landmark designation is not about freezing these buildings in amber. It's about ensuring that historic features, brick facades, gramble roofs, Georgian windows, are preserved with care and intentionality. It's about setting clear guidelines for future work so these buildings remain both useful and beautiful for generations to come. Council President and all of my colleagues, if we want a downtown that's vibrant, inclusive, and rooted in something real, we must protect these two amazing landmarks. They ground us, they remind us of where we've been and who we are. As always, it's one of the deepest honors, as the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, to shepherd landmark designations through this body, and I applaud the landmark commissions for their work and the mayor for approving this designation. With the respect to the district counselor, Counselor Coletta Zapata, I urge colleagues in this body to do our part in affirming these designations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Durkin seeks to pass docket number 1136. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1137?
Docket number 1137, order received from Nicholas Aronello, assessing commissioner of the appointment of Harwood Wolfson as an assistant assessor, effective May 19, 2025.
Thank you. Docket number 1137 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1138?
Docket number 1138, the Constable Barnes of Gabriel Eszabuki, James Burke, Charles Clemens, Giovanni Cologne, William Donniger, Gerald Fanfan, Keith Hirschenson, Michael Janis, Frank Kevitsky, Mark Kevitsky, Jaco and Marchando, William McKean, Sr., Rosa Linda Medence, George Reese, having been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer.
Thank you. These were received and approved under usual terms and conditions. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0968?
Docket number 0968, the Committee on Government Operations, to which it was referred on April 30, 2025. Docket number 0968, ordinance establishing the office of LGBTQIA2S Plus Advancement submits a report recommending this matter ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam President. This matter was sponsored originally by Councilors Henry Santana, Liz Brayden, Julian Mejia, and was referred to the committee on April 30, 2025. I also want to provide recognition and space for our council colleague from District 7, who had produced the original version of this. Docket 0968 is an ordinance formally establishing the office of LGBTQIA2S Plus Advancement. The proposed ordinance places the office under the charge of an executive director, who shall be appointed by the mayor and have the powers and duties of a department head with respect to the execution of contracts and personnel management within the office. The office shall be charged with maintaining a proactive role in monitoring legislative developments at all levels of government, advising city leadership on issues impacting the LGBTQIA2S Plus communities, and developing responsive and inclusive policies in partnership with relevant departments and stakeholders. As outlined in Section 15-14.2, the purpose of the office is to promote the rights -- As outlined in Section 15-14.2, the purpose of the office is to promote the rights, safety, and well-being of the LGBTQIA2S+ residents and visitors in the city of Boston by ensuring that their needs are reflected in all city policies, programs, and initiatives. In 2022, Mayor Michelle Wu announced the creation of this office. Since its inception, the office has led citywide efforts to embed equity, access, and inclusion into Boston's policies, programs, and services. Previously, this work was carried out by the LGBTQ+ liaisons, then ONS, who connected residents to resources and amplified community voices. Having a dedicated office focusing on removing systemic barriers and improving outcomes for this community is essential in ensuring meaningful and sustained progress for Bostonians. Formally codifying this office will protect its mission, strengthen its impact, and ensure that this community remains visible, supported, and centered in city government. The last thing I say before I formally make my recommendation is that this may seem like it is a small action, but it has real, meaningful impact. I want to give a shout out to the existing director here for your work, thank you so much. This signals solidarity and ensures that regardless of who is mayor, who is in elected office, including the Oval Office, that there will be a dedicated office that will uplift, support, and advance our residents. And so, if the federal government attacks or fails to protect the LGBTQIA2S+ community, it becomes even more critical for cities to step up, not just out of principle, but out of moral responsibility and civic duty. And so, as Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action, and at this time, my recommendation to the full council is that this matter ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chair Coletta Zapata, for bringing this up, and I also want to thank my co-sponsors, Counsel Brayden and Counsel Mejia, for filing this with me. I won't go too much into detail, I think the Chair covered what this will do. I think I'll just repeat that, you know, right now, our LGBTQIA2S+ community is being attacked by the federal government day in and day out, and as the Chair mentioned, what this, codifying this office, but what this will do is that no matter who's in office, no matter who's mayor here in the city of Boston, that this office is protected and will be ready to continue to serve this community. So, I was very proud to introduce this again alongside with my co-sponsors. I also want to give a shout out to District 7 City Counselor, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, who was the originator from this, and really appreciate your work and your office's work to get us to this point as well. So, I hope that my colleagues can support this today, and I hope that it's a unanimous support across all of our districts in that larger. So, thank you, Madam President, and again, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I just want to thank Counsel Santana and all the filers, and Counsel Fernandez Anderson, and everyone who has worked on this important issue to make sure that we embed in our city exactly who we are. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to support this, but I also want to highlight the work of the City of Boston Veterans Services for their work on supporting LGBTQ+ veterans and their families, as well, specifically Commissioner Santiago for ensuring veterans from the community are treated with respect and dignity and receive the services and programs that they have earned. Commissioner Santiago, during, during the last six years or seven years, worked, worked with me to address a major problem at the Defense Department where gay and lesbian service members were discharged with a other-than-honorable discharge, which meant that they could not receive the, the services and programs every veteran honorably discharged received, but it was through Commissioner Santiago's work, really, and I reference that because someone mentioned the, the job of this department is also to review city, state, and federal legislation, and that's important to note, but what city, what Commissioner Santiago did was worked with veterans across the country to ensure that, in the Defense Department, to really bring those discharge papers from other-than-honorable to honorable, so that those discharged, because basically because they were gay and lesbian, could receive all the services that they entitled to and earned. So, just want to highlight the important role Commissioner Santiago played over the last seven or eight years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam President, sorry. I am delighted that we've landed at this place, so that we will formally establish an Office of LGBTQIA2S+ Advancement. We are in a perilous moment with regard to civil rights for all sorts of people, but particularly for, for our community, and especially for our trans community in the United States. I also feel that, we talked a lot about intersectionality earlier when we had the presentation, and I feel that, you know, our migrant folks who are LGBTQIA2S+ are in particular focus with regard to their status, and many folks who are citizens may be married to a noncitizen, are choosing to self, self, self-deport and go back to where they came from, often to very dangerous and inhospitable circumstances for folks who identify as we do. So, I am delighted that this is moving forward, and thank you all for your leadership on this, in establishing Boston as a, as a community and a city that really stands by its LGBTQIA2S+ community. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. Happy Pride, it's, this is a wonderful thing to be finishing right now, and I just want to thank Counsel Santana for his leadership, and I want to thank Counsel Fernandez Anderson for her leadership, and I want to mostly thank the Office of LGBTQ Advancement that is doing a tremendous job in a very tough time, making people feel more safe, more connected, and we're going to have a great month, but every month in Boston should be a great month for gay and trans people who want to live freely, and I think that's what we're all striving for, is to, to really make the city more affordable, to make the city a better place to live, to make it more attainable for people, because if Boston's a great place to live and people can't afford to live here, that's also a problem, and I, I, I think that's, when I think about what is sanctuary, sanctuary is affordable place to live, where you can, you can live among people who your identity is realized, and your identity is real and appreciated and loved, and that's what we're striving for every day in Boston, and I'm grateful to my colleagues for acknowledging that, and I'm grateful for this being codified. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? No? Okay, yeah, okay. It's a committee report. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, Counsel Coletta Zapata seeks suspension, seeks passage of docket number 0968. All those in favor, could you please conduct a roll call vote, actually, Mr. Clerk?
Roll call vote on docket number 0968, Counsel Brayden. Counsel Brayden, yes. Counsel Coletta Zapata. Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Zinn. Counsel Louie Zinn, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes, and Counsel Worrell. Docket number 0968 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0968 has passed. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. I do not see the Chair, so we are going to hold on that, and we will move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, can you please, can you please read docket number 1139? Before that, just a reminder for lead sponsors, you have three minutes to speak on a docket, and co-sponsors or any other counsel, you have two minutes to speak on the docket. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1139?
Docket number 1139, Counsel Weber offered the following: Petition for a special law regarding an act directing the Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for Konstantinos Papadopoulos of West Roxbury.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an age waiver request for my constituent Konstantinos Charlie Papadopoulos, who's a longtime resident of West Roxbury. Charlie used to work in financial services for Merrill Lynch, and then joined his father in running the Ideal Cafe on Center Street in Jamaica Plain. That closed a couple of years ago. For the last couple of years, Charlie has been working as a letter carrier. He wants to serve his community on the Boston Police Department. He's 42, and he's an age waiver to, to try to make the grade as a police officer. He speaks English, Greek, and Spanish, and he came to my office recently. You know, I'm happy to stand before you and ask for passage and for suspension and passage of this home rule petition, so Charlie can try to become a Boston police officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Worrell, please add the Chair. Counsel Weber seeks suspension of passage of docket number, and adoption of docket number 1139. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket? We're just going to continue and finish motions, orders, and resolutions, and we'll go back to matters recently heard for possible action. Okay. Mr. Clerk? Yep, yep. Can we please, can you please read docket number 1141, where we'll skip over 1140?
Docket number 1141, Counselors Durkin and Flynn offer the following: Order for a hearing to evaluate autonomous vehicle operations in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. I'm excited, as the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, to have this hearing. I think we've all heard that companies like Waymo right now are mapping our streets for autonomous vehicle technology and to bring it to Boston, but this has to be approached with care. I met with representatives from Waymo last year to discuss their interest in mapping our streets, and I appreciated their willingness to listen and engage, but Boston is a uniquely complex city to navigate, and any new, new mobility challenges must be responsive to our workforce, our neighborhood infrastructure, and our climate. I expect that the city council will take this up before the end of the summer, and I'm looking forward to a continued thoughtful public conversation. It's also come to my attention that there needs to be state legislation in this regard for this to be possible, and while autonomous vehicles have completed over 50 million miles with no driver, most of those miles have not been in Boston, and what we need to make sure is that significant, there needs to be significant reductions in accidents. I know that Boston is unique and is very different from the operating environments in Phoenix, SF, LA, and Austin. While early data has been promising, we must ensure that AVs are substitutive rather than additive to more automotive-based transportation volume. We do not have more room on our streets, and we're the fourth worst in congestion in the entire nation, and we only have a certain amount of bandwidth on our streets. We must make sure that autonomous vehicle penetration does not detract from the usage of public transportation, which is necessary for the economic health of our city and region. While autonomous vehicles show benefits around safety and efficiency as a whole, it can easily come crashing down on one of our historic streets when our streets are made for horse and buggy. So, we need to have this conversation at the city council, and we absolutely need it now, while they're mapping the streets, while the State House is discussing legislation. So, I'm hoping this hearing will happen in July. Both the city and state have put out AV testing guidance framework from a few years ago, but that needs to be updated, and we absolutely have work to do. There's also a conversation that needs to happen about public benefits and potential public benefits that could come out of autonomous vehicles operating on our streets. I want to thank my colleague from District 2, Counsel Flynn. It looks like we filed similar legislation for this meeting, so we're partnering together on this, and I'm grateful to have another champion in this work. So, thank you, Counsel Flynn, and thank you to the Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counsel Durkin, for letting me co-sponsor this with you. This is a topic that requires our attention, as this technology will impact Boston's streets and pedestrians' safety sooner or later. Over the past two weeks, there were reports of these vehicles being tested and driven around Boston, including neighborhoods of South Boston, East Boston, outside of Boston, including Cambridge, Somerville, as well as on the Mass Pike. These vehicles, as Counsel Durkin mentioned, are developed by Waymo, a Google-owned company that specializes in self-driving technology, which is considered a potential, which is considering now a potential expansion in Boston. Waymo currently operates in San Francisco, Los Angeles, Phoenix, Austin, cities that operate in a grid and have mild weather climates compared to Boston. As self-driving vehicles gain popularity in other cities across the U.S., it is critical, we have a discussion on whether this technology is appropriate and possible impacts to our existing pedestrian safety crisis. A poll conducted by AAA found that 13% of respondents trust sharing the roads with a self-driving vehicle, while 61% say that they are afraid of self-driving vehicles. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reported that Waymo vehicles were involved in 202 crashes, 31 of which resulted in injuries. We all know that Boston is one of the oldest major cities in the United States, with narrow one-way streets, alleys, and the lack of a grid system, especially in the downtown area. We have to consider our already complex street network in narrow or dense one-way streets as well, ongoing traffic, construction. We have existing issues with double-park cars, ride shears, delivery vehicles. With the warmer weather, my district has nonstop road constructions and, at times, street closures, as do other districts as well. We have pedestrian-heavy neighborhoods. In the last couple of years, we have mopeds, bikes, multi-moderular devices that have witnessed, that we have witnessed disobeying the rules of the road. It is appropriate for us to consider the impact these self-driving cars will have on the dynamic in Boston. Boston's winter weather is another major factor that needs to be considered. According to the report, self-driving cars have historically had more problems in areas with snow. In the final analysis, we need safer roads with traffic-calming infrastructure, raised crosswalks, speed humps, pedestrian islands in the middle of the road with rapid-flash beacons. Everyone here is aware of that, although this city disagrees with me, I continue to advocate for the raised-traffic-calming infrastructure to be placed where the majority of cars, and pedestrians are, on our main streets, commercial roads, and high-traffic corridors. We need predictable traffic conditions, and we, as a city, have to discuss whether this technology will create pedestrian safety issues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please update the attendance record to reflect that Counsel Worrell is now present and with us? Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Coletta Zapata to this filing.
Thank you. Counsel Durkin seeks to suspend the rules, add Counsel Coletta Zapata as the third original co-sponsor, seeking hearing, no objections. Counsel Coletta Zapata is so added. Counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam President, and I want to thank my colleagues for outing me on as a co-sponsor. I do believe that Boston should take the lead in reviewing autonomous vehicle operations to protect our neighborhoods, ensure equity, and prepare for the future. Our city streets are dense, historic, and not necessarily built for this technology, and that includes the North End and places like East Boston, where Logan Airport traffic, or Logan Airport constantly brings traffic, pedestrian, and public transit challenges. Without clear oversight, AVs could worsen congestion and could potentially threaten public safety. public safety. But if it's done right, AVs could help us reduce emissions, improve transit connections, and create jobs. And so I really look forward to this conversation and look forward to bringing potentially mass port into the conversation, our folks, our colleagues at the state, because we do need state regulations for this. But I do expect that it'll be a thoughtful, robust discussion. Again, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add counselors Brayden, Coletta Zapata, Fernandie Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Docket number 1141 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 1142? Oh, Mr. Clark, could you please update the record to reflect that Counsel Mahia is now present and with us?
Docket number 1142, Counsel Fitzgerald offered the following. Order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to conduct and safety procedures and policies for Boston Public Schools in District 3.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Doing the 17F, just to get reports, it's really to educate myself on the protocols and procedures around safety and conduct in the schools of District 3. We've had a lot of calls recently, and more so so I can get it and educate the parents of what to expect as well. But the BPS has been very cooperative in this matter, and I think we actually already have the 17F back, so we thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Fitzgerald seeks to suspend the rules and pass the docket number 1142. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clark, could you please read docket number 1140?
Docket number 1140, Counsel Worrell offered the following. Petition for a special law regarding an act directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officers for Rodney Alcindor.
Thank you, Counsel Orrell. Counsel Mahia, just, Counsel Mahia, thank. The Chair recognizes Counsel Orrell. Counsel Mahia, we need to, just, Counsel Worrell is speaking, yeah. Counsel Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This home rule petition seeks an age waiver for Rodney Alcindor, a 46-year-old, lifelong Bostonian who currently resides in District 4. Rodney has dedicated decades to our city as a business owner, mentor, and community leader. He's led youth through sports, entrepreneurship workshops, and community events. He's earned the respect and trust of residents across Boston. Rodney understands the challenges that exist between law enforcement and communities they serve. He wants to bridge that gap, not by just wearing the uniform, but by bringing empathy, emotional intelligence, and lived experience to the job. He recently passed the civil service exam and is ready to take a step into a new chapter of service. For those reasons, I respectfully ask the Council to suspend and pass this home rule petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like, oh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise to speak on docket 0926. Last year, on September 11th, this body passed that home rule petition that we worked with through the Chair, Counselor Coletta Zapata, to increase the overall age. And I know the mayor did sign it on September 19th. So I do just want to highlight that we have sent this up to the State House, so I will be working with my colleagues, hopefully, to see where that is so that we don't have to continue to do these one-offs, because I know the intent on that was if we increased the age overall, we wouldn't have to do these individual ones. So thank you for that.
I agree. I think it's really important that we get that passed. Counsel Coletta Zapata, I don't know if you, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to my colleague for bringing this up. It's been sponsored by Representative Adrian Madaro, and so it's currently going through that review process, and so I'm hoping for a hearing forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add counselors Brayden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandie Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair. Counselor Worrell, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1104, 1140. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Okay. We are now moving back to matters recently heard for possible action. And I believe I have the order correct. Okay. We are now onto matters recently heard. Mr. Clark, would you please read into the record the revolving funds, including Parkman and PEG funds, dockets number 80831 through 0845.
Docket number 0831, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to support the maintenance and repair of BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease, permit for use, and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in the fund. BPS facilities will be the only unit authorized to expand from the fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2 million. Docket number 0832, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 for Boston Public School transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. This revolving fund shall be credited with revenue received from Boston Public Schools Department for the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activities other than transportation to and from school. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $150,000. Docket number 0833, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to repair and purchase Boston Public School computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. This revolving fund will, shall be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for Boston Public School technology. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $2 million. Docket number 0834, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Tourism Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza to advance tourism and promote participation in public celebrations, civic, and cultural events. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to City of Boston Code Ordinance, Chapter 11-7.14. The Mayor's Office of Tourism will be the only unit authorized to expand from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0835, messaging not authorizing a limit on the Environmental Conservation Commission Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 for the purpose of securing outside consultants, including engineers, wetland scientists, wildlife biologists, and other experts in order to aid in the review of proposed projects to the commission, grid the city's ordinance protecting local wetland and promoting climate change adaptation. The revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from fees imposed by the commission for the purpose of securing outside consultants. The Environment Department will be the only department authorized to expand from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $50,000. Docket number 0836, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Distributed Energy Resource Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to facilitate the purchase of offsets of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of the electricity consumed by the city annually, and to operate, maintain, monitor, and expand the city's existing solar arrays and Boston Public Schools' combined heat and power facilities. This revolving fund will be credited with any and all receipts from the sale of renewable and alternative energy certificates and demand response program revenues produced by the combined heat and power units located at Boston Public Schools sites, and solar renewable energy certificates produced by the city's photovoltaic arrays. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $150,000. Docket number 0837, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Boston Centers for Youth and Families Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the City Hall childcare. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from tuition paid by parents or guardians for children enrolled at the center. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $900,000. Docket number 0838, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Law Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to purchase goods and services for repairs to city property. This revolving fund shall be funded with receipts, by receipts from recoveries for damages to city property caused by third parties. The Law Department will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $300,000. Docket number 0839, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 26 to pay salaries and benefits of employees to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the Police Department Fitness Center. Revenue from this fund is derived from monthly membership fees. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $125,000. Docket number 0840, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to support the K-9 units training program for officers and police dogs from non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The Special Operations Division will charge tuition and other fees to outside law enforcement agencies for the K-9 unit. The tuition and other fees by outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and provide funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. The Special Operations Division will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $125,000. Docket number 0841, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to purchase goods and services to support public art to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Improvement Commission. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $800,000. Docket number 0842, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2026 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $300,000. Docket number 0843, messaging not authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2025 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $300,000. Docket number 0844, messaging not approving appropriation of $3,600,000 from the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational and/or Governmental PEG Access and Cable Related Fund pursuant to Section 53F and 3/4 of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws. The funds may be used to support PEG access services, to monitor compliance with the cable franchise agreement, and for preparation of renewal of the franchise license. And docket number 0845, messaging not authorizing the appropriation of $1,300,000 from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund. The funds are to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation for the maintenance and improvement of Boston Common and Parks in existence since January 12, 1887.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you for all of that reading. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Orrell. Counsel Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to save my operating, my remarks for my operating section. We have three votes until we get there. The first is the revolving funds, docket number 0831 through 0845. It includes Parkman Fund and the PEG Fund. These matters were sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and referred to the committee on April 9, 2025. Some dockets were heard as part of the public hearings on topics included Boston Public Schools, Office of Tourism, Sports and Entertainment, Department of Innovation and Technology, Environment Department, Boston Center for Youth and Families, Boston Police Department, and the Office of Arts and Culture on April 15, 2025, April 29, 2025, May 1, 2025, May 6, 2025, May 15, 2025, and May 20 of 2025. Dockets number 0831 through 0843 are authorizations of revolving fund limits for FY '26. Annual authorization for the dollar limit for each of these revolving funds is required by their Enablement of Legislation Section 53E 1/2, Chapter 44, Massachusetts General Laws. Revolving funds are an important budgetary tool for departments as they allow for better financial flexibility in the management of unpredictable and self-sustaining activities. The Committee on Ways and Means has formalized and standardized the review process for these funds by running reviews concurrent with the annual budget review process and departmental budget hearings with the intent to maintain transparency and accountability in the annual review and authorization of these funds. Dockets number 0844 through 0845 are authorizations of annual appropriations for special funds. The 21st Century PEG Access Fund was established by Boston's acceptance of a local option pursuant to Section 53F 3/4 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws in 2016. The fund revenue is made up of cable franchise fees paid by subscribers from Comcast, RCN, and Verizon. Their appropriation is used to support public education or governmental access cable television services. The city uses the fund to support BNN, which provides community, government, and educational access television, and radio program, training, and production services, and Tech Goes Home, a digital equity initiative that provides low-income and underserved residents in the city with the opportunity, tools, education, and access required for 21st century skills development. The fund also supports the city's dark fiber infrastructure and other cable-related advocacy, auditing, and regulatory services. The Parkman Fund is a trust fund designated for maintenance and upkeep for certain city parks, including the Boston Common, Public Garden, Olmsted Park, Highland Park, Horatio Harris Park, and Malcolm X Park. The fund was established in 1908 from a request from George Francis Parkman, and the annual appropriation is used to fund operations, general care, and maintenance, specialized maintenance of infrastructure and equipment, infrastructure improvements, and repairs as needed. As Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that these matters ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your diligence in holding these hearings. I remember the one on Strand Theater, the one that included Strand Theater, and I was able to ask the interim director questions directly about the money and the allocation and how we're supporting the work there. So I just want to say thank you for holding these hearings. Do any of my colleagues, would any of my colleagues like to speak on these matters? Okay, if not, we are taking each docket one by one. I just want to make sure that I start, okay. We are starting with docket number 0831. Sorry, 0831. Okay, thank you. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0831. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0831 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0832. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0832 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0833. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0833 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0834. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0834 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0835. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0835 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0836. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0836. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0836 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0837. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0837 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0838. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0838 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0839. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0839 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0840. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0840 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0841. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0841 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0842. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0842 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0843. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0843 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0844. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0844 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0845. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0845 has passed. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0824?
Document number 0824. Message in order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits OPEB liability trust fund authorized under Chapter 32B, Section 20, as added by Chapter 479 of the Acts of 2008. The latest available OPEB actuarial valuation as of June 30, 2023 estimated the city's unfunded liability at $2.68 billion. Filed with the Office of the City Clerk on April 7, 2025.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Orell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This funding, this is funding our pensions and liabilities. Document 0824 represents the operating budget allocation to fund the city's liability for other post-employment benefits, while the city is required by law to make an annual contribution towards reducing its unfunded pension liability. Similar to pensions, employees earn these OPEB over their years of service but do not actually receive them until retirement. The independent valuation as of June 30, 2023 valued the city's, Boston's unfunded liability for these benefits at $2.68 billion. In FY, in fiscal year 2008, the city was required to follow new governmental accounting standards board requirements to identify and disclose this estimated liability. At the same time, the city also voluntarily began to annually allocate funds to reduce the OPEB liability. Annual allocations of retained and irrevocable trust fund authorized for the city's acceptance of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, as added by Chapter 479 of Acts of 2008. After June 30, 2024, the fund had a balance of $1.17 billion, and the city has been contributing $40 million to this fund each year since fiscal year 2013. As Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that these matters ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, Madam Chair. I did have my light on on docket 0837. I did want to speak about it briefly.
So, I'm sorry, I may have missed your light. We are on docket number 0824. Once we're done with that docket, if you would like to speak briefly on that docket because I missed your light, you may do so. But right now, we are on docket number 0824. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket number 0824. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0824 has passed. Counselor Flynn, we've passed docket number 0837. Is that the docket you would like to?
I'm fine.
You're offset? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0825 through 0827?
Document number 0825. Message in order approving an appropriation of $5 million from the city's capital grant fund to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, other transportation infrastructure, and any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the city. Such funds will be transferred in credit to the capital grant fund from revenue received from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund filed by the Office of the City Clerk on April 7, 2025. Document number 0826. Message in order approving an appropriation of an amount of $3,500,000 from Surplus Property Disposition Fund credited to the capital fund for planning, design, and construction for Dorchester Fieldhouse, general parks improvements, restroom facility improvements at the Boston Common, and the municipal animal shelter. Filed in the Office of the City Clerk on April 7, 2025. Document number 0827. Message in order approving an appropriation of an amount of $5 million from the Parking Facility Fund credited to the capital fund for planning, design, maintenance, and construction for parking facilities. Filed in the Office of the City Clerk on April 7, 2025.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Orell. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Document number 0825 is an appropriation in the amount of $5 million from the city's capital grant fund to address the impact of transportation networks services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or to be used for any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network companies in the city. Under Chapter 187 of the Acts of 2016, certain transportation network companies must submit to the Department of Public Utilities the number of rides from the previous calendar year that originated within each city or town in a per-ride assessment of 20 cents, which are credited to the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund. Half of that fee is distributed by the Department of Public Utilities proportionately to each city and town based on the number of rides that originated in that city or town. The funds are collected and deposited to the city as special revenue and must be appropriated to be spent. These funds are earmarked for TNC-related purposes, including investments into ways of mitigating the impact of TNCs and alternate modes of transportation. This fee will be discontinued as of January 1, 2027. The FY '26 to '30 capital plan includes $19.5 million in revenue from this source. Document 0826 is an appropriation in the amount of $5 million from the Surplus Property Disposition Fund credited to the capital fund for planning, design, and construction for projects including the Dorchester Fieldhouse, general parks improvement, restroom facilities improvement at the Boston Common, and the municipal animal shelter. Document number 0827 is an appropriation in the amount of $5 million from the Parking Facility Fund established by Chapter 484 of the Acts of 1946 and credited with proceeds from activities related to the city-owned off-street parking facilities acquired under the aforementioned legislation. The fund shall be credited to the capital fund for the planning, design, maintenance, and construction of parking facilities. The city's two current revenue generating lots are Lafayette and Sullivan Square. As Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that these matters ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, we will take each docket one by one, but would anybody like to speak on any of these dockets? The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd like to speak on dockets 0825 and 0826.
You may speak on them, yep. You have the floor.
Let me start with 0826. I had the opportunity recently to join city councilors on a visit and tour of the city of Boston Animal Shelter as well. But I know this fund, these funds are critical. I know the Dorchester Fieldhouse is a critical asset, will be a critical asset, improvements at the Boston Common as well. These funds are going to go a long way. Infrastructure is critical. On docket 0825, I think it's important for us to acknowledge we have significant challenges with our sidewalks and our streets, and we have to invest the proper resources in them to ensure that our streets and sidewalks are safe for everybody. Pedestrian safety is a critical job for all of us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the Chair, I would like to discuss 0826. If it's for $3.5 million, and my question, I fully support all of these improvements, but if we have a breakdown, how much do you know, Counselor Orell, of the $3.5 million will be going to the Field House? How much is going to the animal shelter and the bathroom improvements at the Common?
Counselor Orell, if you'd like to respond to the Chair, you may.
I am happy to. I don't have that, I don't have that breakdown in front of me, but I'm happy to request and provide that information to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just a point, maybe a correction. On the front page of the committee report, docket 0826 says $3,500,000, and then on the actual, on the other side, it says $5 million. Is that correct, or is that a typo?
I have $3,500,000. Mr. Chair.
You take a, you just check it and take a quick look.
Okay. We will take a quick break, no more than five minutes, and we'll be back. We will take a quick break, no more than five minutes, and we'll be back. We are back in session. We are back in session. Everyone should have the corrected copy in front of them.
Yeah.
Ron, can you give one to Mr. Clerk, please? Okay, thank you. So does everyone now have the corrected docket in front of them? Okay, thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. I did just want to rise again on docket 0826 to uplift the advocacy and hard work of our former colleague, Councilor Baker, who worked really hard during our Opera money debates to get funding for the Dorchester Field House. So glad that there is some money going there through different avenues, but excited was at the groundbreaking along with him and other colleagues and looking forward to this wonderful addition to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just want to echo what Council Murphy said, a longtime advocate and supporter of the Dorchester Field House, as I mentioned. Critical, critical role it will play in Dorchester, helping young people. But I do want to acknowledge, as Council Murphy did, the role of former City Councilor, Frank Baker. He never gave up on the Dorchester Field House, never stopped advocating for the youth of the community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd also like to stand up and give a shout out for the municipal animal shelter. We all know that it is a facility that is in greatly need of repair, ideally replacement with a modern, state-of-the-art facility that would meet the needs of our animal municipal, all of our dogs and animals in the city. So it's heartbreaking to visit there, and I think it's long past time that we actually moved this forward. So this is wonderful. There's going to be money for planning, design, and construction, so I'm pleased to see this included. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Braden. And I want to echo that. I want to echo how important it is for us to be investing in the animal shelter because they're doing so much on so little, including all of the staff led by the amazing director, Director Alexis Trzynski. And I'm glad to see that our collective advocacy has been able to help move the needle in getting an animal shelter, in getting improvements to the animal shelter, and one day getting a new location for one. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I spoke briefly on this previously, but did also want to mention when I took the tour recently, Council Fitzgerald was with me. And I like Council Braden. I want to acknowledge the tremendous advocacy and staff at the animal shelter. They do a tremendous job and really go out of their way to be helpful to so many animal lovers across the city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, indeed, they do. The Chair recognizes Council Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank my colleagues that attended the tour of the animal shelter because animal shelter is really a beautiful facility that we have across the city, but I'm lucky to house it in District 5. And being able to tour it multiple times already in my tenure, just seeing the work that they do where they not only house cats, dogs, and other animals, they have an amazing veterinarian that is from the city of Boston. Their trucks go out to the entire city of Boston. But what I also notice is that they're also strained of resources. They need this funding. They need support in order to continue to serve the entire city. And I'm just so lucky, again, that they are right off of Washington Street in Rosinell, and I'm just a big fan, and just a shout out to all the employees that work there. So again, thank you to all the colleagues that took time to go out of my district and see the animal shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll take each docket in turn. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the Committee Report and passage of docket number 0825. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The Committee Report has been accepted, and docket number 0825 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the Committee Report and passage of docket number 0826. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the Committee Report and passage of docket number 0827. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0822?
Docket number 0822, Message Order for Annual Appropriation and Tax Order for Fiscal Year 2026 filed in the Office of the City Clerk on April 7, 2025.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Every meeting since April, I've stood up and given updates. We all know budget meetings and hearings can feel like an eternity, but we're only up to 123 hours, 53 minutes, and 18 seconds across 51 hearings and public listen sessions and working sessions. For this week, I wanted to do something a little different and take a moment to acknowledge the work we've done to shape this proposal. A budget process isn't only about the data. It's not about minutes logged. It's about our residents and how government can best serve them. So I'm going to try to do my best to keep it short and sweet. Colleagues, every budget cycle gives us a chance to come together, to bring our different perspectives and experiences, our advocacy, and our personalities to the table to build a package of investments that our residents not only need but deserve, and we do all that work together. This year's budget cycle process was especially critical. With the real threat of federal funding cuts hanging over us, we were tasked with walking a tight rope to protect vital city services while also responding, preparing to respond swiftly to any financial shocks. That's not an easy balance, but we did it. Despite the uncertainty, we delivered a budget that doesn't just maintain the status quo. It pushes us forward. When there is more money for youth jobs, it's a win. When we are able to provide more funds for housing vouchers, it's a win. When we are providing more funds for newcomers to learn English in this environment, it's a win. When we are working together as a body, it is a win. This process is not just about shifting dollars or line items on a paper. We are reshaping systems and launching new initiatives that reflect our values. These systems weren't built overnight, and they won't be transformed overnight either. This budget reflects the council's shared commitment to collaborating with advocates on equity, access, and opportunity. And I want to thank you all for all the meaningful council amendments that helped shape not only the numbers on this page, but the policies and values behind them. When we work together, residents, advocates, councilors, the administration, it's not about winners or losers. It's about recognizing the progress we made in this moment and recommitting to the work ahead. For example, I recognize that the housing investments in this budget alone are not enough to meet the full scale of the housing crisis. But that doesn't mean our work stops. This council has already pushed forward new strategies, from creating the Housing Acceleration Fund to advancing stronger affordability. Throughout the budget process, we prioritize listening. Public listening sessions, brought a hearing to Grove Hall, and stayed here in the IONELA Chamber until 10:00 p.m. to hear directly from residents. We hosted evening hearings to make sure more voices could be heard, because this budget is stronger when it reflects the people we serve. To every resident who showed up, spoke up, or shared their story, thank you. Your voice truly helped shape this package. Real lasting change takes time. It takes intention, and it takes all of us. This moment is part of a larger journey, and we're walking that path together, one meaningful step at a time, because real lasting change is built one step at a time, and we're taking those steps together. I want to thank everyone, all my colleagues, all their staff, everyone who came up to testify, IGR, central staff, especially my team, for all your work on this budget. And as Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that this docket ought to pass. Thank you. It ought to pass in an amended draft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to personally thank you for your diligence in holding. I wasn't, you gave a lot of numbers in terms of minutes and times and hours and hearings, but that you spent shepherding us through this process, having hearings where we could ask questions and get information back when we ask questions. And so I want to thank you for your diligence in getting this done. I think the investments, as you stated, you know, in sending initially the mayor a letter to uplift the council priorities, including what we know is the number one issue in the city of Boston, which is one of housing, including deep, deep investments in youth jobs, which so many on this body have been advocates for, including issues of everyday quality of life issues when it comes to pest control and traffic enforcement. So I just want to thank you. You know, oftentimes, we would come in and out, come, ask questions, and then we'd leave. And you, as a Chair, you sat there throughout all the hearings, and I just want to thank you for the work that you've done, not only last year, this year. I couldn't be prouder of the Chair that we have in you as a Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. So thank you so much for shepherding us through this process. And I am excited for the investments that we've been able to make collectively through these amendments. And I think, you know, like you stated, I would always want more money for a lot of the issues, including our housing vouchers, our city vouchers, and we're going to need to do more deep investments in the coming year in the city vouchers. But I think we work collectively here, not only on vouchers, but you can't place those vouchers if you're not, if you're being discriminated against, which is why it's incredibly important that we're also investing in housing testers, in fair housing testers. There's no fair housing testing happening right now in the city of Boston, given the actions of the federal government. And so it is incredibly, incredibly important. So much of this is linked. Not in this, not in any of the amendments, it's something that I really deeply care about, which is Community Land Trust. And so I will continue to advocate that we can get a committed line item for that, perhaps, in the next budget cycle. But I just wanted to thank you for your leadership in putting this package forward and in really listening to all of your colleagues and trying to have us compromise with each other. So thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Okay, I'm going to go around the horseshoe. The Chair recognizes Council Santana. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I really want to thank Chair Worrell. Thank you so much for shepherding us through this process. It's been, you know, it's my first term. I've really enjoyed that you are the Chair of the Ways and Means and just been very accessible to me and my office and gotten us to this point. You know, I think, like you both said, I think this, I'll be voting in support of this amended budget proposal. Everyone knows that my number one priority is our youth. And after seeing that there were some cuts made to youth jobs, you know, that was my number one priority going in. So I just really like to see that youth jobs is increased and reflected in this budget. And just on top of that, you know, housing, English classes for people who speak different languages, investments in MOLA and MOYA, you know, our immigrant communities, LGBTQIA+ plus offices, who are doing so much with very little resources right now. And, you know, so this budget reflects that, these amendments reflect that. Again, just really appreciate you being able to go through this process with us. And this is a, you know, I think no budget is ever perfect, but I feel that this budget reflects the needs of the city in the moment that we're in right now. And I really have enjoyed the last week, just being able to listen and collaborate with my council colleagues and being able to compromise, right? And I think that's what it's all about. I've learned a lot during this process, but Boston residents are holding us accountable, and I think that this budget does just that. So again, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be voting in support of this today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Pepe. Council Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, as the Vice Chair of Ways and Means, being able to really see the work that our Chair has been putting into this since day one, I just want to congratulate him for all the amazing work that he has put into and all the time and effort as well that it has taken to shepherd this process, which is not an easy one. You know, the budget of the city of Boston is one that tries to show the people that we are investing in all areas of our city that may be impacting them in terms of city services, whether we're paving our streets or taking care of our trash, to investing in housing, investing in education, investing in transportation. We have to take all of that into consideration. And what made me even prouder, being part of this process this year, is that I was able to be at a budget listening session with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, the Comings Highway Neighborhood Association, at the Mattapan Branch Library, where I was able to partner up with our Chair, Brian Worrell, but also Madam President was present as well that Saturday morning, and hear directly from residents of the investments that they want us to see put into our budget. And I think that when we looked at this amendment, amended budget that our Chair is putting forward, it speaks to that. It speaks to the emails, to the phone calls, to the hearings, to the meetings that we've had with residents. And that's why I just, I'm just so proud of the work that the Chair has been able to do, but also to rally the 13 of us, which is not an easy thing, to find a place of a meeting ground and have a working session that we were able to pick and choose and say, oh, this is what I believe we should invest in, this is what I believe we should invest in, and somehow find the solution. And I just wanted to share that with you, Mr. Chair, that I think that this was done very well done, and I will be supporting this amended budget that's being proposed today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Pepe. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to highlight the leadership of Council Worrell during this period of time. Council Worrell highlighted the number of meetings and community forums and public testimony, and we listened to a lot of residents and advocated here with city councilors. And I saw his...
No, no, there's no talking on any cell phone or anything while in chambers. Thank you. Apologies. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess my point was I saw upfront the leadership of Council Worrell on... So I guess my point was, I saw upfront the leadership of Councilor Worrell on every hearing, public hearing that he had, because I attended every single one and listened to the residents. Last week, I think we were here till 10 o'clock at night, just a public testimony session. Two weeks before that, we were in Grove Hall, listening to residents about the Age Strong Budget, about the Veterans Budget. But it's an opportunity for residents to come together, to weigh in on what's important to them. It's not what's important to us as city councils, it's what impact it has on residents. So I want to acknowledge the work Councilor Worrell and his team have done in ensuring residents have, were heard during this process. I asked Councilor Worrell if he would hold a listening session, and to explain the budget process with me in the South End at the Ruth Barclay BHA Development, which is the old cathedral in the South End. I proudly represent the old cathedral of public housing, Ruth Barclay, and the residents down the road at Villa Victoria. You can't get a more diverse group of people there. But we had a wonderful listening session with South End residents, talking about particular issues that they were advocating for. And you're right, housing was a top issue. Pest control, traffic enforcement. What I also advocated besides those issues was, as many of my colleagues know, and as probably the public knows, supporting veterans. That's an issue that's important to me, because it's important to the residents of the city. And we know the incredible contributions veterans and their families have made. And during this process, we were able to provide, through a unique system, we were able to provide about $50,000 to kind of open up funding that was already in the Veterans' Budget, but using the current funding that we weren't able to use to help more veterans. And I believe that fund is several hundred thousand dollars, $500,000, I believe. But on Friday, I'm going down to DC because there's a veterans' rally down there. And we know that the federal government is cutting veterans' services and veterans' programs. And I want to make sure that we in this city continue to be a strong supporter for veterans and for military families. So when I go down there, I'll be fighting for all veterans across the country, like I have in these sessions, because I think it is an important issue. The second issue I really fought hard for is ensuring that firefighters, men and women, that we respect them, we respect their health, we ensure that there's funding available to address occupational health issues, such as cancer and heart disease, due to the dangerous and hazardous environments they serve in. Probably the person I was closest to, besides my wife, is my Uncle Dennis, who was a decorated Boston firefighter, and a distinguished decorated Vietnam veteran, US Army. He died, he died at a young age, heart disease. There's a small memorial for him at Meadow Vana Park in South Boston. Every time I go by there, I think of him, I think of the firefighters also, but I think of the veterans. But our firefighters have a much lower life expectancy than the population. When they retire at the mandatory age, I think the average number of years they live, unfortunately, is about five years after they retire. And that's through their longtime conditions that they worked in, putting their life on their line for the residents of Boston, visitors of Boston, and their families as well sacrificed. I think this funding will go towards ensuring that we respect our firefighters, to educate, raise awareness, facilitate early detection, immediate intervention upon diagnosis, to save the lives of our firefighters. It's not enough money in that budget, but again, this is about compromising, and I think I've done my fair share of compromising over the last several months, more than I would like to have, but that's the process. Again, just want to end by saying thank you to Councilor Worrell for being professional throughout the process, and being respectful to his colleagues as well, and to the public. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. I want to thank the Chair, the Chairman of Ways and Means, Councilor Worrell. I've just seen your leadership, I'm so impressed by it, really just seeing the heart and soul and communication, I'm really getting emotional, that you've put into this budget, but also everything you do. Thank you. I'm rising in strong support, I want to, there are a couple recommendations in here that I'd love to take credit for with my constituents. I'm deeply supportive of funding a downtown parks administrator. I know that you all have heard this from me before. That is not technically a budget amendment, but we are hoping, it's a policy recommendation, we are hoping will be funded in January. We know that Franklin Park needs to get their administrator first, but we will be waiting in line to see how that goes, and hoping that a downtown parks administrator is on the horizon. I also want to thank my colleagues for supporting the Boston Park Rangers Mountain Unit. They had some very, very small asks that would make a really big difference to their operations, and I'm proud to have pushed, to advocate for an allocation of their full ask in their May 9th letter to the council. The park rangers are an indispensable presence in our parks, serving as guides, educators, and protectors, and I'm proud to be their champion. I also want to highlight an innovative opportunity I pushed for, a merchandise licensing pilot. You all have heard from me about this, but this is not a traditional budget line item, but it's forward-thinking, it's revenue generating, and it needs to be prioritized. My office partnered with the BU Initiative on Cities and the Queston School of Business at no cost to the city to look into a study, and they did a great job looking into what it would require for the city to put forward a program. But that's why allocating 100K in seed funding to move this concept into implementation, especially in a time when we're thinking about how to celebrate the 250th, is important. And this will be overseen by Do-It, and will require cross-departmental partnership, creativity, and vision. It will open doors for local artists, entrepreneurs, and most importantly, it'll make money for the city. While no budget is perfect, no budget is ever perfect, this reflects real compromise, thoughtful leadership. I want to thank Mayor Wu for our starting point, and I want to thank the council for coming together. This budget process felt much different than last year. It felt like we were truly working together for the city, and I think that's what we need to do. And I think you all may have seen over the past few months, an evolution in my leadership. I really, truly believe that we need to work together for the city, given all the federal challenges, given everything that's coming down the pike. We have a real opportunity to be leaders together, and I just want to thank my colleagues for all working in partnership. While every single cut I didn't agree with, every single addition I didn't agree with, what I realized is that if we are to value each other's leadership and value all the people who put us here, we really have to value all of our colleagues as well, and all of their ideas. And I just, I saw that yesterday during the working session, and I've seen that through the past few weeks, so I want to thank all of my colleagues. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Durkin. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, would like to thank Chair Worrell, Matthew, thank you for all you do and your whole team. Also want to shout out Karishma and everyone on central staff for being here for us, not just for the Chair, but all of us in our offices. You've been, they've been very supportive, so thank you for that. And also want to thank the mayor and her administration. I feel like she did send us a good budget and a good starting point for us to jump off of, and did also feel like this amendment process felt different, which I'm happy to stand in support, this amendment budget, which I see reflects the values that I've championed throughout my time here on the Boston City Council: care, preparedness, and equity. My personal amendments focused on strengthening mental health services, improving our emergency preparedness infrastructure, youth jobs, increase in rental vouchers, and also funding for our age-strong, our seniors, in programming and in nutrition, and also more meaningful mentorships for our children, our students, and always making sure that we're advocating for our city employees. So thank you to the Chair for keeping those amendments in this amended budget, and also working with me and all of us to make sure, because everyone knows that the hardest part of this amendment process is where does the money come from? We all bring such great ideas, but we have to balance it, so thank you for that. Over the past four years, I've worked to ensure our budget just isn't balanced, but it's compassionate and forward-thinking. And I believe that the priorities that are critical to building a healthier, more resilient Boston every day reflects in these amendments. So looking forward to voting yes on this amended budget, but I also want to thank my colleagues for advocating for other amendments that I also support strongly. Everyone, I think, put in a housing, in some form, a type of housing amendment, pest control, English as a second language classes for our parents and for our students, Parks Department, veterans, and fire cancer screenings, which we did here recently at a hearing with our Fire Department, that the average life expectancy of our Boston firefighters after they retire is only five years. So it's important that we continue to support and fund any way we can the health of our first responders, and also making sure, like I did, put forth an amendment supporting all of our city workers. So thank you, Chair, thank you to your team, thank you to central staff.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Kalada Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I want to echo the gratitude and congratulations to our venerable Chair of Ways and Means, Councilor Worrell. You have been an incredible force throughout this entire process, and just kudos to you and your staff, and all of central staff, Karishma included, for the process and the way it was run this year. There are historic investments, as folks have already mentioned, and I think it's safe to say that the council, that how we've worked together is, I hope, a model moving forward. I think that we all demonstrated fiscal responsibility in trying to invest in our own priorities, and it's already been said, but the difficulty of exercising that fiscal responsibility and trying to pull from various departments that we all care about and understand do important work, that was the most difficult part about it. But we were data-informed, and we let the numbers speak for themselves, and ultimately, the city housing voucher investments, homeownership opportunities, youth jobs and programming, senior programming, veteran supports, mental health services and emergency preparedness, college and career readiness, access to council, thank you to Council Weber for your leadership on this. Investments in the nuts and bolts, and I want to shout out Council Flynn for his advocacy for city workers and veteran supports. And I've done myself a disservice, because I started shouting out my colleagues, even though I really should be shouting out everybody, and I apologize. Everybody has done an incredible job and has advocated based on their priorities in such an effective way, which I think is important. A few shout-outs for some of the priorities in my district. Langone-Popolo Park is something that has been brought to my attention by the Friends of the Little League and the Little League itself. It desperately needs long-term maintenance, not just for the backstop and home plate, but all of the field. It is continuously brown, and so this was something that I worked with them on and grateful to see included in here. We heard testimony from folks whose lives have been changed by English language classes, parents, families who have gone to learn English to access different opportunities, whether in their work or in their personal lives. And it made me emotional listening to them during the public testimony portion of it, because they were so grateful for the opportunities that many of our community benefit organizations and nonprofit organizations in our various districts, they work so hard to provide for folks. And so this was something that we funded at $500,000 last year, we level-funded it this year, and I want to shout out English for New Bostonians, who really, and all organizations, who advocated for this to be level-funded this year. We're also seeing a new investment, which is legal supports for immigrant families who have been torn apart by immigration officials, and this is something that I was proud to put forth and sponsor through the Moya contractual. And I believe it was already put forth by a number of my colleagues, and I apologize, I don't have a full list for that, but certainly wanted to co-sign my name onto it, because we had seen that parents have been coming into schools, and I get a call from the school social worker who was asking, what can we do? How can we best support this parent whose husband has been taken away, and now they don't have rent the next month because he was a sole breadwinner? She herself only works one job, part-time. How can she afford an immigration attorney? And we luckily were able to find a couple pro-wonol lawyers, but at the end of the day, consultation costs money, and their cases do require quite a bit of resources. And so putting this into Moya contractual is building on an existing program and framework. And so those are the things I'm really proud of. I will be voting yes, and just want to thank all of my colleagues for their work, their collaboration, but most importantly, to the Chair of Ways and Means for his dedication and his time, which he's so eloquently quantified during this process. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn Andrew Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually was up very, very late doing some work, so if you don't mind, I'll just be sitting.
You may.
Thank you. So I'll start with, you know, I wanted to just speak, address my constituents in terms of the advocacy that took place during this budget process, and work closely with the Chair to be able to delineate the different things that they were asking for or advocating for, and what was possible, and then the compromise. And I appreciate Chair Worrell, thank you so much. I think in the hallway, I said you have been a better Chair than I was, and I really appreciate that. I'm still smarter than you, but it's okay.
You're both great Chairs, both of you.
So thank you so much for your patience, for your grace, and for your humility. And so, you know, it's tough to be in your seat, and you do it with a smile, and I appreciate it, even when I give you a hard time. And so the, what we did is we went, you know, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, and we basically did these town halls, state of each neighborhood in the district. We took account of the different statistics on all domains, you know, housing, public safety, public health, and so forth. And then we went to work with BU and did some data science comparative analysis numbers. We looked at 311 responses for city services, and then we looked at, we filed 17Fs to actually get reports of capital investments and how we were tracking them. And then we went ahead and built a dashboard for District 7, which will be implemented in the District 7 website. And then we held listening sessions and budget workshops to educate, to further educate constituents who wanted to get involved, and, but not just learn, rather, understanding resources so that they learn how to navigate those resources. And then we came up with a list of all the things to advocate for, just wanted to go on record, that I advocated for private alley repair, which I think, you know, Councilor Pepe was also advocating for, and we came to some small recommendation on your report, Mr. Chair. So SE EV chargers, sorry, SE South End EV chargers, Roxbury EV chargers, South End fridge program, South End library, of course, which we were very pleased to see that was in the capital, included in the capital, and was not reduced. I thank you, Madam Mayor. Conker Square, historic cobblestone repair, sidewalk repairs, of course, some of the things that were included or advocated for were more capital types of asks. And so we did not exclude them off the list, but rather left it so for me to explain to the District 7 community or constituents on how to track those investments that are already in the budget. In Roxbury, folks advocated highly in South End and Fenway for pest control, Warren Sherry pavement, trash bins on Greenville, solar power, charging benches, dog park, as well as street pavement. Again, some of these are capital, I understand. Residential parking, and a full transportation study on impacts of transportation, particularly in District 7, and comparing that, obviously... and comparing that obviously to the whole city. Sidewalk repairs, again, playground on Mount Pleasant Ave. Spending, speeding, so it's a lot of transportation and traffic calming and safety, and more on parking, more on reinforcing parking. And then, of course, wayfinding and respect for pedestrians. In the Fenway, we heard a lot from constituents talk about the Porch Fest, which my colleague would be happy to know that I was also advocating for. Parks and open space, funding to maintain Muddy River Restoration Project, repairs to Edgerly Road Playground, Fenway Civic Association funding, food distribution program support, funding for following grants. And I have them listed in writing, which I submitted to the Chair for your report. And so, I just wanted to say, of course, we were not able to reach all of those amendments or be able to deliver all of those amendments. And I just wanted to quickly talk about some of the issues that I noticed with the budget process in terms of between the council amendment process and the city's actual budget process. So, we looked at the different departments and how they were transferring funds, and I noted, you know, we all noted that this had been happening over the years, and I'm quite sure for decades now, where some departments had a pattern of underspending, but then eventually would transfer funds that they did not use. And so, whether departments seemed inflated or not, we took a look, a hard look, at whether or not they were going to be able to hire or increase capacity in a certain time. So, if you have $2 million over, but you've been underspending or you have a pattern of underspending, $2 to $3 million over the past three or four years, then it didn't make sense to leave those funds. So, it's important for the community members, people at home, to understand that we're not in the positions of cutting people's jobs, never have been, not when I was Chair, not now. So, what we do is we look at money that is basically there in excess, and we try to move some of it, leaving some cushion to increase capacity without harming that department, without definitely risking laying off anyone. In terms of accountability, there are... So, the procedures don't align. So, basically, departments, in the ways that they are creating their line items and spending, there's also an ordinance that specifically precludes or prevents us from telling department heads how to execute their job. So, you can't necessarily make amendments to say that you want them to spend it at a specific location or in a specific way. So, you'll see the mayor will take the amendment and say, this is a recommendation, or this is an intra-departmental kind of thing, or you can't tell me, or you can't tell my department heads how to do it or where to put it, so I'm going to exclude this. Also, last year, about $8 million in amendments, and if you look at the records, only about, close to $3 million was actually allocated and spent, and that is not from us. We would follow up with departments, look at, speak with department heads, and ask them, how can we put these out in our FISA contracts and why haven't they been spent? Departments sometimes do not get those RFIs typed or created in time. So, if there's no RFP or RFI, rather, RFP, then there's nothing to apply to. So, the money just sits there like it's fake money. So, that doesn't work either. So, how do we hold accountable ourselves, departments, the mayor? We really have to look, do some introspective work in looking at how we're doing things. And it means whether we have to think about if we have metrics and if we're willing to go to 112. That conversation was had as well. Folks talked about, if we go to 112, what does that happen? I was shocked that actually just about all of my colleagues were willing to go to 112. However, do we have implemented framework or infrastructure to be able to do that properly? Were we being genuine, authentic in saying that we were ready to go to 112? We are not. We don't have an actual budget team. We have one budget analysis, and she is amazing, but one person. You can imagine $9 billion looking through that, even if we don't have budgetary powers on the capital, you'd still want to be able to comb through and see if it makes sense, right? Capital infrastructure development is like intricately connected with operating. So, you want to look at both. We don't have the team to do that, to do that proper analysis, to be able to say, this is what's happening, this is the impact, and this is where we are, this is how we monitor it, these are the metrics, and now we know how to track it, so we can see if we're making progress. We don't have that. And so, the conversations then went to find what those metrics look like. Is the council ready to have hearings, hopefully asking reports from certain departments? We did congratulate and happy to say, announced that the Blackmail Advancement Department is actually one of the few, I think Mayor's Office of Housing is pretty good with this as well, to actually report on their accomplishments or their progress. And we would like to see more of that from other departments, whether we implement more metrics. So, we then created this funding or recommendation to create this dashboard or to uplift or evolve the dashboard that already exists for capital, but we need to do that across the board. And even with analysis, the Boston analysis, you can see that things are delayed, so that doesn't happen. Then, finally, I would say that in terms of creating metrics, you have to be able to look at, are we doing the work, the policy that aligns with our budgetary investments? And not necessarily. While we are complying with contracts with the police department, we are actually not necessarily monitoring how police reform is taking place so far. And I'm not interested in talking about where the blame is, but rather really practically look at how we can make changes. And it means that, you know, a new administration, four years, is that enough for full police reform? Probably needs more time. But I would say to the council and to my constituents that to look at that first and look at real preventative measures means, you know, more investment in youth jobs, more investment in investing in black economy drivers or racial economy drivers so that we can curb the systemic oppressive issues that we have, which leads to violence and so forth. And then, the police reform, of course, we have plenty of examples on how to do that. Finally, I thank you for indulging me in talking about that. Finally, I will be looking forward to delivering in the next meeting or so, maybe the following, the workbook that I've put together, over 410 pages for District 7, which actually offers worksheets to track the budget. And it goes beyond, obviously, projects, policy, and budget, but also really offers a documentation of the current state of things, the work, as well as hopefully serving as a baton to the next counselor to be able to build continuity in District 7. I wish you, I really appreciate this, appreciated this budget process. It's not about being happy or not happy with it. We all know that the funds are pretty restrictive right now, like there's not a lot to play with. So, understandably so. Of course, I'll be voting in support, and I thank you again for the process.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Councilor Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chair, for running the process. It was great to see my amendment in there focused on activation and programming for the youth, especially the ones that frequent South Bay, to have them have summer programming on the weekend nights. Otherwise, we did our job. It's a good budget, and we'll always strive to improve. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I just, I really want to reiterate, I think, what many of you have already said, that to thank Chair Worrell for running this process, I think we were talking that, you know, there's no manual for this, and this is my, you know, kind of second go-around with this. And I'm just, I've been thoroughly impressed by, you know, your hard work and dedication to running this process. You and your staff have done a great job, and I think, you know, all of us have benefited from your hard work. I would just like to thank, you know, in terms of access to council, something that I push for, you know, I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for supporting it, but I'd just like to highlight, you know, Superintendent Skipper and Chief Sheila Dillon testified before us, even though it wasn't in the budget, they said it should be. And so, I thank them for their testimony. I'd like to thank the Boston Teachers Union for sending a letter in support of the program. And just, you know, I would like to thank Sharon Durkin, who has spoken up about it, and I really appreciate it, and thank her for her leadership on that issue, as well as all my colleagues for supporting a program that's really going to help people in need. Thank you very much. And I do support this package, and I think it's a great compromise that we've worked out that's going to help people in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden, Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I also want to thank our Chair of Ways and Means. I think this is a very, a lot of engagement we have among each other as we talk about the priorities and the vision we have. And in this moment, we have really focused on those most vulnerable in our communities. So, although I didn't offer too many amendments on my own, I do support many of the amendments that my colleagues offered. My particular interest has been, right since I came to the City Council, was ESOL for parents, ESOL classes for parents in Boston Public Schools. All of my colleagues will have a tote bag on their desk or underneath from the Gardner Pilot Academy. I was there last night for the summer celebration of their class, the end-of-year class. It was a really joyous occasion, we had about 150 parents and their children there celebrating their advancement and better proficiency in English. And it's really life-changing for immigrants to be able to have better English skills. They can get better jobs, they get more pay, and they can support their families. So, it was a wonderful occasion. So, you've all got a little baggie under your desks from Gardner Pilot Academy Adult Education Program. I also, you know, the right to counsel for families who come to the city. I would like to thank my colleague, Councilor Weber, for his leadership in that space. We did find it was, although the money that we appropriated last year for this didn't get out the door until very recently, in the last few months, there was evidence that having access to counsel, if you're in threat of eviction for families in Boston, we've managed to prevent, I think, 73 families from being evicted and stabilizing their home situation so that their kids can focus on their education and not be displaced. It also saves Boston Public Schools money because we spend $17 million a year transporting children from out of, students who have been in shelters outside the city back to their schools in the city. So, I want to also thank all the central staff and Karishma, who's been a star in this process. And I'm really excited that we have landed on a compromise that's got general consensus across the whole body and that we're very proud to send it to the mayor for adaptation and inclusion in the final draft of the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I also just want to make sure we echo the praise to Karishma and to your entire staff. Councilor Worrell, I want to thank all of my colleagues again for working together so that we could get here and on behalf of all of the residents. And Councilor Coletta Zapata mentioned legal assistance for immigrants, and I think it's an issue that so many of us care about. I also want to thank the mayor because it was either last week, I think it was last week, she invested $700,000 in legal assistance for members of our immigrant community, and we also added an investment on top of that, and I think that's really, really important. But her investment allowed us to be able to put money elsewhere, and so, I really appreciate the work that everyone is doing to make sure that our immigrant communities here feel very safe. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. If there are no additional comments or no councils would like to speak, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means accepts the committee report and passage of docket number 0822 in an amended draft. Ms. Clark, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0822. Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louie Zinn.
Yes.
Council Louie Zinn, yes. Council Mejia. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Pepe.
Yes.
Council Pepe, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 0822 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0822 has passed in an amended draft. Congratulations, Mr. Chair, for getting us here and for all of your work. We are going to take a 15-minute break because there's, we have food in my colleagues, and then we're going to move on to the capital budget. We are in a recess.
So this 2026 to 2030 capital plan includes 390 new or continuing projects and proposes $463 million in new bond authorizations that would fund 94 projects. And that's all from the budget book. But my problem with this really is a historical issue that goes back decades. Austin-Brighton has been consistently underfunded when compared with other districts across the city for decades. So this is an example of it. This is new capital authorizations for FY '16 to FY '25. And Austin-Brighton is in red. It's very hard to see this. But in 2016, new capital authorizations, we were ninth, we were last. In 2017, we were last. In 2018, there was nothing, not one penny on new capital authorizations. In 2019, we had... We were in the middle of the pack. But again, I think that was probably the Faneuil Library project. And in 2020, that's probably the Faneuil Library project again. And then in 2021, that's sort of Smithfield and Faneuil Library project. I can actually name the two projects. And then in 2022, we're back to the last again. 2023, back to the bottom of the heap again. 2024, 2025. And I think this year, in 2026, we're back at the bottom of the heap again. And then when you compare that with some of the other districts, you see some of these. This is District Two. District Two is top of the heap, like eight out of 10. And this is a gross inequity. Austin-Brighton has a population of 80,000 people. We have the same area and population as the city of Somerville. And we do not have a community center. We have one community center that is scheduled for improvements or to be replaced by a new building. You know, I've been told that there's a new project manager assigned to this, but they're actually not going to spend any money, not going to spend any money on doing anything this year. That was the same as last year when we were to be scheduled. So things are moving forward slowly. But, you know, this is a systemic problem. This is a systemic problem that predates... This is going back three or four mayoral administrations. Austin-Brighton people come to me and say, "Why do we always forget? Why are we not getting a better deal out of this?" Actually, in the 1970s, '80s, I have to go back and research this, but there was a move to have a ballot measure to secede from the city of Boston because Austin-Brighton didn't feel they were getting their fair share. And this explains why. And this is still happening in 2025, financial year 2026. So, you know, I realize that we're... I'd like to see more equity in this situation. We're not the only district that's getting underinvested in. But I feel very strongly that we are in... What we will do today is encumber debt. We will give the city authority to borrow money, and it may or may not. We have authorized debt. There's probably debt that's been authorized going back 10, 15 years. In 2019, in 2018, there was nothing, not one penny on new capital authorizations. In, in 2019, we had, we were in the middle of the pack, but again, I think that was probably the Faneuil Library project. And, and in 2020, that's probably the Faneuil Library project again. And then in, in 2021, that's sort of Smithfield and Faneuil Library project, I can actually name the two projects. And then in 2022, we're back to the last again. 2023, back to the bottom of the heap again. 2024, 2025, and I think this year, in 2026, we're back at the bottom of the heap again. And then when you compare that with some of the other districts, you see some of these? This is District Two. District Two. This, District Two is top of the heap, nine, like eight out of 10. And this is a gross inequity. Alston Brighton has a population of 80,000 people. We have the same area and population as the City of Somerville, and we do not have a community center. We have one community center that is, is, is scheduled for improvements or to be replaced by a new building. You know, I've been told that there's a new project manager assigned to this, but they're actually not going to spend any money. Not going to spend any money on advance and doing anything this year. That was the same as last year when we were to be scheduled. So things are moving forward slowly, but you know, this is a systemic problem. This is a systemic problem that is predates, and this is going back three or four mayoral administrations. Alston Brighton people come to me and say, why do we always forget, why, why are we not getting a better deal out of this? Actually, in the 1970s, 80s, I, I have to go back and research this, but there was a move to have a ballot measure to secede from the City of Boston because Alston Brighton didn't feel they were getting their fair share. And this explains why. And this is still happening in 2020, 25, financial year 2026. So, you know, I, I realize that we're, I'd like to see more equity in this situation. I, we're not the only district that's getting underinvested in, but I, I feel very strongly that we are in, what we will do today is encumber debt. We will give the City authority to borrow money, and the mayor may not. We have, we have authorized debt. There's probably debt that's been authorized going back 10, 15, 20 years that has never been actually issued. And this is the, this is the unissued, unissued debt. So we authorize debt all the time, but we don't actually spend it. And our neighborhood is, is crying out for some investment, and we're beating the bushes and raising money from institutions and from developers to try and get money to fix our parks and do that, but that's not the way we should be going forward. This is not, there's sort of a custom and practice that this is the way we have done this, and this is, we just keep doing what we've always done, so we just end up perpetuating a problem. But as, as, as a District Councillor for Alston Brighton, I'd say this is something we all as a body need to address and see if we can work with the administration and OBM to see if we can get, do something better than this. This, this definitely needs improvement. I'm delighted for those neighborhoods that are getting new community centers and new schools and, and new parks and all of the other wonderful things that we're investing in, but Alston Brighton is certainly not close to getting what they need. We have one community center, I harp on about it, the Jackson Man. It's really in a building that has, has been said that needs to be knocked down. We have one community center, we're the size of Somerville. District, District One, my colleague from District One has, 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 I think, eight community, eight, eight community centers, including two pools, and I think there's, there's a proposal to build another community center for 88 million, and we, we haven't got any. We, we have basically got a building that has to be closed. So there's this notion that we can struggle along and that the, the building will do, we'll, we'll make do with the building, but we, I'd love to see some urgency about moving the Jackson Man Community Center forward. And we can't just go this sort of incremental progress year on year on year. You know, I, I look forward to working with the administration to see if we can speed this up and, and make some progress, but our district is really desperate to get this, get some more capital investment from the City. And I think this, 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 this graphic demonstrates what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Council Braden, for your relentless advocacy. I think many of us, especially at large councillors, were present in Alston Brighton where you brought the community together and to just show how underinvested in, how sidelined the AB community has been in terms of the community center. And you raised an excellent, excellent, excellent point, was my first hearing order, about us as a city not tapping into our full debt capacity and what that means for our ability to do and invest in public projects. So I just want to join you in the advocacy. I will be voting yes on this capital budget because I think it's really, they're really important investments, especially in our libraries around the, around the city and a lot of the projects that we're going to be doing, housing in conjunction with our libraries, investments in our schools, and I do think that this capital budget is trying to push the needle on, on issues of equity, especially racial equity. But I, I, I just want to say that I join you in your continued advocacy, that we lean into our ability to use our debt capacity and our fiscal strength to do the work of investing in our schools, investing in our public buildings, and investing in what matters most, the residents of the city. So, thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Claudia Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I'm definitely not going to fact check in real time, but I do just want to say that the Nazaro Center, especially in the North End, is going to be a, a new community center, but it is replacing a very old and rundown location. But I do appreciate my, my colleagues' relentless advocacy and admiring, and your district is very lucky to have you and your advocacy there as it relates to the capital budget. I am, I am pleased to see a lot of the, the new investments, the significant investments as it relates to the capital budget in, in my district, and I'm very lucky, there are legacy projects that I inherited that my predecessors were able to get in, Doherty Park, City Arts, Noise, Ryan Playground, just broke ground, Parrish Street Gym and Pool, there's a bunch of other things. This council, in partnership with the community, fought for transformative, once-in-a-generation investment at the Clarity Pool and the Bath House, and that's going to have a ribbon cutting, I think, sometime in late June, I'm not going to put a date on it in the event that I'm wrong, but that was a huge win for our community. A couple of other things that we saw in this capital budget, citywide trash overhaul and reform, this is a new trash collection contract, street reconstruction and resurfacing. Every single time I'm out and about in the community, folks are asking for our streets to be repaved, our sidewalks to be maintenance, and this is another huge investment that I'm seeing here. Sidewalk and ramp reconstruction for FY 25 and 27 includes all the responses to 311 requests, which my office puts in daily, thank you to my staff. 311 modernization, upgrading front and back ends of Boston 311 system to modernized architecture for improved usability and access improvement, that's something that my office has put forward, and I'm still going to fight for an ombuds person position so that they can track all of the, the cases as they come in and making sure that constituents are happy at the end of the day. Coastal resilience reserve, a funding reserve that will be used to provide matching funds as needed for state, federal, and other grant programs to support budget increases of coastal resilience projects that may be necessary. Technological infrastructure to our system, so upgrades to tech infrastructure in support of 21st century learning. East Boston Safe multimodal corridors, which is improved safety and accessibility along key north and south transit corridors, so this is Meridian Street, Bennington and Saratoga Street, through quick build pilot interventions utilizing awarded federal funds, retaining wall repairs at Copseal Terrace, other climate resilient solutions at Long Wharf, Mary Ellen Welsh Greenway, and the East Eagle Street Shoreline. Sullivan Square Engineering and Design Services to provide corridor-wide transportation improvements. Court renovations to rehabilitate tennis, basketball, and street hockey courts citywide, and shout out to the Parks Department who went out there at East Boston Memorial Park, Union Park, and I think Porzio Park to do some quick fixes for the cracks in that pavement. Lost Village Streets, McLean Playground is a huge win for us, thank you so much. They'll be able to close the funding gap on much-needed repairs at that location. The North End Community Center and Doherty Park Accessibility Improvements, these are all incredible investments, and I do just want to shout out the Wood Administration for prioritizing these projects after listening to the community and taking heed the advice that I had and things to prioritize as well. There are some outstanding projects, right? There's the ambulance bay in Charlestown, which is something that I will continue to fight for. The North End Library has been under study for 11 years now, so I think it's time to move that forward. And then Porzio Park is a key last piece in climate resilience in the Jeffries Point neighborhood, and that's not a full and comprehensive list, but due to the incredible investments that I'm seeing here, I'm going to end up voting yes on the capital budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Claudia Zapata. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all my colleagues and their fierce advocacy on behalf of the people that we serve. How do they say? I want to rise and thank Council Braden for her fierce advocacy. I rise to say that I am also deeply concerned about the, the lack of investments in District Nine, and I just want to acknowledge and give a shout out to Council Anderson, who one of her first mandates when she was the Chair was to really look at equity across our entire processes as it relates to the budget. And one of those initiatives was to really look at the capital budget, and so really looking forward to seeing that manifest in, in our work here. And I will just say that for me, I am not going to be voting in support of the capital budget while I'm going to take lots of credit for everything that we fight for here, including the Clarity Pool. We were big advocates back in the day, pushing the administration on that, and I'm really happy to see those investments. But I, I do believe that the, the system and the process is flawed, and we have an opportunity to repair the harm. And so I'm looking forward to being a part of that conversation.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I, I'm fully supportive of this capital budget, but I know alongside Council Braden, we are the two lowest of, of the, of the capital improvements. District Eight gets 6% of the total capital improvements, and the majority of those are for the Boston Common and Public Garden, which are used by everyone in the city. But I do think representing a district that does have a lot of Article 80 projects, representing a district that does have a lot of other opportunities for betterment, I, I am fully supportive of making sure that all neighborhoods in the City of Boston get what they need to survive and thrive. As City Councillor for a lot of downtown neighborhoods that do not have a public elementary school, that had been the push of many, of many councillors before me, and now we're in a very different economic moment where we can't afford to open new schools right now. So we're in a very different place and realizing there aren't a lot of public amenities that District Eight residents get, our parks are those amenities, and the improvements that are called for within this capital budget for our downtown parks are incredible, and I want to make sure they happen. So I did send a letter to the administration asking for updates on, on all of the District Eight capital improvements, including, including the park and the realization of the Boston Common Master Plan. I did get a response, and I was happy to hear that some of those projects are going to start as early as the summer. But the little things like the getting AC in the tow bin have been sped up due to my advocacy, and I want to thank the administration for listening. That is, the Tow Bin Community Center is a community center that's used by everyone in the area, including District Seven residents, so I'm grateful for, for that, and I'm grateful to have some expedited movement there. I do want to share that I think for next year, I'm going to start now, there is some advocacy I want to make, and I'm grateful to the administration for their open ears because I do think every single neighborhood has things that we could improve upon. And I just want to share that I think Council Braden's advocacy, particularly on how we can do capital budgets in the future, it is important that everything that we do really have timing associated with it. We've heard from experts, and they're demanding more, so I think for next year, we should absolutely be asking for those changes. So grateful to the Chair, grateful to all of my colleagues, and I'm really excited to vote in support of this, and then I will be a dogget advocate to get all of this stuff done. The 6% of what is allocated for District Eight should get done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council Durkin. Would anyone else like to speak on the capital budget? The Chair recognizes Council Fernand Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to, again, Councillor O'Warrill, Mr. Chair, for your leadership. Although capital is not a budget that we have any type of autonomy or powers over, still the conversations that you, that we had about, you know, where things were going and, and the increases in different areas, different neighborhoods that you saw that we all advocated for certainly were noticeable in this, in this budget. I do sympathize and have long offered my support to my colleague in Alston Brighton, Council Braden, who has been a really strong advocate, fierce advocate in her district within her own right. There's been, we've heard different reasons for the administration not really investing financially in the capital budget with, within Alston Brighton, and still, I, I disagree, but I'm not, you know, again, like my word is not the end-all, be-all. I do think that there are opportunities to be able to create some incremental investments if you're not going to just flip it overnight. For example, it took decades before administrations began to pay attention from Marty Walsh to now Michelle Wu, some of it propelling from Marty Walsh administration to now. You could see how over the years incrementally or gradually budgets begin to increase in Roxbury, Southend, and Grove Hall area, and the rest of Dorchester and D7. So the same for Alston Brighton, I would say, you know, beyond just creating those metrics, meeting with departments, which I know you do, talking about metrics to measure and track project over measured progress or implementation of those allocations, beyond conversations of building relationships and advocating for the needs in your district, you have actually gone to community and invited us, you've brought us there and said, look at these conditions in person. You've had conversations, you've had meetings, you've advocated, and you've also had numerous of meetings with the administration, and we know because we've been hearing you in terms of advocating in those meetings. And so here we are, again, another year. I totally understand you. I'm not in favor, and I understand that you, you should, within your own right, as District Councillor, vote no. I would probably do the same. But for, for myself, frankly, wouldn't vote if I knew it wasn't impactful, I would make a statement in my own way. But I absolutely respect your statement today and support you from afar, although I'm going to vote in support of it to continue to advocate, or rather, advocate here today for those projects to be completed and executed in District Seven. So I thank you for your, for your work. You do an amazing job for them, and your district is lucky to have you. For District Seven, my constituents in District Seven, we have exciting projects underway. A lot of parks, can't wait for Deli Town Common, the Trotter Park, and many others. A lot of road pavements, the Roxbury Resiliency Corridors, the R Corridor has already started, that was from ARPA funds, but now continuing. You have the Charles, the, the, sorry, the Car School, and then as well as Melnea Cass included in the Resiliency Corridors, Warren and Malcolm X Boulevard. You also have the MLK Project underway. We saw funds for Madison Park so that we can go into getting some more funding from the state, and you saw a lot of investment in Franklin Park as well. I think that, you know, looking at that if properly monitored and hopefully followed through with, you will see that some of these investments, I hope that with school facilities, will directly align and support holistic education for our kids in District Seven. In Boston in general, because kids who come from all over Boston to schools in District Seven, you will see that environment is, is being covered as well. Transportation, one recommendation that I continue to say is that we need a full, comprehensive transportation plan, especially because the one for the White Stadium is definitely lacking in terms of community suggestions or recommendations about this impact study on transportation. It's not, it's not, it hasn't been completed, doesn't mean that there's no opportunity here to do it in the future. And I would say that, you know, hopefully in the future, we have, or you have the autonomy to go ahead and invest more in open spaces, and looking at how to look at blight buildings, how to implement more tourism, connecting one of the highest revenue drivers to Roxbury and Grove Hall, connecting or revitalizing our business corridors, adding foot traffic, and ensuring that we are driving our economy to upper mobility. So thank you all for getting indulged in my long speeches, but I think it's important to go on record to understand where, where we stand. And again, please look forward to the District Seven Workbook 2025 edition for all of this in there, and worksheets to which you can use to track and monitor progress in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Weber. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I thank you to Council Braden for your advocacy. I, I, I'm sorry to say, I, I'm going to support the capital budget. In, in District Six, over 70% of the dollars in construction for the capital budget are going to one location, the Mildred Haley Apartments, where, you know, those units have been neglected for way too long, and that, that project is going to provide, you know, real livable conditions for, for folks who need it. So, you know, because of that, I'm going to vote in favor of the budget. I, I, my apologies to Council Braden, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay, we are going to take these dockets one by one. No one else? Okay. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means recommends a first reading vote on docket number 0828. Mr. Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote on docket number 0828? Mr. Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote on docket number 0828?
Docket number 0828, Councillor Braden.
No.
Councillor Braden, no. Councillor Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Councillor Coletta Zapata, yes. Councillor Durkin?
Yes.
Councillor Durkin, yes. Councillor Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Councillor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councillor Fitzgerald, yes. Councillor Flynn?
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Louie Jean?
Yes.
Councillor Louie Jean, yes. Councillor Mejia?
No.
Councillor Mejia, no. Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, yes. Councillor Pippin?
Yes.
Councillor Pippin, yes. Councillor Santana?
Yes.
Councillor Santana, yes. Councillor Weber?
Yes.
Councillor Weber, yes. And Councillor Worrell?
Yes.
Councillor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0828 has received 11 votes in the affirmative for its first reading.
Thank you. Docket number 0828 has been read for the first time and is assigned for further action. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means recommends a first reading vote on docket number 0830. Mr. Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote on docket number 0830?
Councillor Braden? Councillor Braden, no. Councillor Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Councillor Coletta Zapata, yes. Councillor Durkin?
Yes.
Councillor Durkin, yes. Councillor Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Councillor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councillor Fitzgerald, yes. Councillor Flynn?
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Louie Jean?
Yes.
Councillor Louie Jean, yes. Councillor Mejia?
Councillor Mejia, no.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, yes. Councillor Pippin?
Yes.
Councillor Pippin, yes. Councillor Santana?
Yes.
Councillor Santana, yes. Councillor Weber?
Yes.
Councillor Weber, yes. And Councillor Worrell?
Yes.
Councillor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0829 has received 11 votes in the affirmative, receiving its first reading.
Thank you. The Chair of the Committee, oh, thank you. Docket number 0829 has been read for the first time and is assigned for further action. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means recommends a first reading vote on docket number 0830. Mr. Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote on docket number 0830?
Councillor Braden?
Yes.
Councillor Braden, yes. Councillor Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Councillor Coletta Zapata, yes. Councillor Durkin?
Yes.
Councillor Durkin, yes. Councillor Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Councillor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councillor Fitzgerald, yes. Councillor Flynn?
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Louie Jean?
Yes.
Councillor Louie Jean, yes. Councillor Mejia? Councillor Mejia, yes. Councillor Murphy?
Councillor Murphy, yes.
Councillor Pippin?
Yes.
Councillor Pippin, yes. Councillor Santana?
Yes.
Councillor Santana, yes. Councillor Weber?
Yes.
Councillor Weber, yes. And Councillor Worrell?
Yes.
Councillor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0830 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative, receiving its first reading.
Thank you. Docket number 0830 has been read for the first time and is assigned for further action. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0823?
Docket number 0823, message in order for annual appropriation for the School Department for fiscal year 2026, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 7, 2025.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Brian Worrell. Councillor, you have, the Chair of Ways and Means, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee began the BPS budget process in November of 2024 and in total held five public hearings and three working sessions regarding the FY26 BPS budget. This is a new level of engagement with the BPS administration and we work in a collaborative manner with Superintendent Skipper and School Committee Chair Robinson. The committee submitted a letter with the list of the council's BPS priorities prior to the school committee passing the budget, which we have seen those priorities reflected in the final BPS budget. The FY26 budget includes a 45.5 million increase and funded over the appropriated FY25 budget to total a six-year, 300 million commitment made to Boston schools since 2020. Investments in the FY26 BPS operating budget include $10 million for year two of the inclusive education plan investments starting this year in grades first grade, second, eighth and 10th grade, building on last year's grades of K0, K1, K2, 7th grade and the 9th grade. $4 million for additional bilingual programs, including Spanish and English. $5 million to program and school expansion. $6 million in new classrooms. $6 million to add additional positions in schools such as social workers and transformation coaches. $5 million for in-school pool maintenance and staffing and school pool programming. $1 million in additional curriculum materials. $1 million in welcome services in the BPS helpline and $5 million to reserve for future school needs. There's been so many starts and stops with BPS in the past couple of decades. I take the collaboration and openness to respond to councillors with our hearings and working sessions as one in the right direction. We have started to build a better foundation at BPS and I'm looking forward to a focus on what happens in the actual classroom and how our students improve in progress in their learning. And as Chair on the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that this matter ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councillor Murphy. You have the floor. I think I see, I saw Councillor Murphy, I think I saw Councillor Santana, Councillor Mejia, then Councillor Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I will be voting, oh, first I do want to thank our dedicated teachers, staff, administrators, our parents, most importantly, our students who show up to our schools every day. As you all know, I was a Boston Public School teacher for over 20 years. BPS kid myself for many years, my own children in and out of BPS schools, like many parents have to do, find the best choices and make the best decisions for our kids, which often land us for several years at different schools across the city. So thank you for showing up every day for our kids. That's important. But I will be voting no again, my fourth year in a row, on the Boston Public School budget. This decision stemmed from multiple persistent concerns that I have consistently raised over the past four years. This year I'll focus more on the ongoing issues with student transportation that I believe cannot be overlooked. Despite repeated requests, Transdev, the company contracted to provide school bus service for BPS, has failed to appear before the council to address critical concerns affecting student safety and public accountability. This lack of transparency and accountability is unacceptable, especially when student safety is at stake. Moreover, also, the reason why our kids show up to school every day, the academic performance within BPS remains a significant concern. The most recent data continues to show that close to 80% of our 4th graders and even higher at some grade levels in neighborhoods across the city are not reading on grade level. And those numbers are even more serious and critical for students with disabilities and our English language learners. Some, our students with disability have a proficiency rate of only 11% and our students, our ELL students, only 13. These statistics highlight systemic issues that need to be addressed to ensure all students receive the quality education they deserve. While there have been improvements, there definitely have, and when I go on school visits, I do see wonderful things happening, but such as an increase in the system's five-year graduation rate and other things that are going in the right direction, I believe these incremental changes are not sufficient. Many students and schools are still not receiving the education and support they need. It is imperative that we hold the BPS accountable in their $1.58 billion budget and push for comprehensive reforms that address both operational and academic shortcomings. And I do believe that our students can't keep waiting year after year after year. When the state submitted their report, we saw that for 18 years our special ed students were not getting the education they deserved. That meant many of our students spent their entire time in our BPS system, not getting the services they needed. Therefore, until these critical issues are adequately addressed, I cannot in good conscience support the BPS budget. Our students, families and communities deserve better. I have filed a communication to be, to get on record, which is a late file today, but it also addresses the persistent and alarming issues, which I mentioned earlier around Transdev. So I do just want to highlight when I reference that they have not come before this body when asked. The company is contracted to provide the school bus services for our BPS students. We know 22,000 students are bussed each day around the city. Despite many formal invitations, Transdev has failed to appear in the council to address these critical concerns about student safety and public accountability. In 2024, I filed two separate hearing orders. Docket 070705 focused on transportation for our student athletes and Docket 1349 addressing transportation delays during the first week of school. In both cases, Transdev was invited to participate in the hearings. They declined to attend or respond, leaving the council and the public without the answers we need to ensure the safety of our children. This pattern of non-engagement is unacceptable, especially in the light of recent tragedies. In December 2024, an eight-year-old student with autism was struck and seriously injured by a BPS school bus outside the Curly Kid Aid School in Jamaica Plain. Many of us have seen the recent dashboard footage that revealed that both the driver and the bus monitor were asleep at the time of the crash, before the crash. The child suffered a fractured femur and underwent multiple surgeries. Then, as we all know, the heartbreaking tragedy that happened in April of our five-year-old lens, Arthur Joseph, who was fatally struck by a BPS school bus. The driver was later found to have been operating with an expired license and also hitting cars a few bus stops before. These devastating incidents point to systemic failures in oversight, driver training and contract enforcement. Last week, in response, I did file docket 1101, co-sponsored with Councillor Flynn to examine the hiring, training and certification practices of BPS transportation vendors. And during the budget hearings, we did, and we had a hearing with transportation to talk about the new bus contract that our bus drivers have been awarded and there are still outstanding questions around that. Despite the urgency and repeated safety concerns, Transdev has continued to avoid public accountability and until the company appears before this council to answer for its failures, I cannot in good conscience vote for the Boston Public Schools' $1.58 billion budget, which includes over $189 million for our students' transportation. Throughout this year's budget process, the Chair of Ways and Means assured councillors that any department could be called back for additional questioning. I formally requested that BPS return so I could ask these specific questions about Transdev and other transportation questions. Yet I was informed yesterday, the day before a vote, that it did not work for BPS's schedule. They weren't available. To me, that response is unacceptable. Given what's at stake, our children deserve safe, accountable transportation and this council, I believe, deserves real answers. Thank you.
The Chair, okay, I think the order was Councillor Santana and then Councillor Mejia and then Councillor Coletta Zapata and then Councillor Flynn. Okay, the Chair recognizes Councillor Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, thank you Chair Worrell for getting us to this point. Today I'll be voting in support of this budget as Education, or as Chair of Education on the Boston City Council. I always said that I meet very regularly with the Superintendent and to really just talk about, you know, when I'm visiting schools, when I'm visiting all our schools across the city, I see issues. I see good things happening and I always bring it back to her and her and her team have been extremely responsive to my office. As many of you know, I've been, when the budget first announced, I got to see that there was cuts to the St. Stevens Mentoring Program. This is a program that I really, really care about. Although I didn't personally benefit from this specific program, I benefited from the idea from programs like this. I went to the Blackstone School and had adults in the school that spoke both English and Spanish, that were from the community. I also had the same experiences at the Tobin where I went to middle school and I think that makes a big difference. I think especially as someone who had to learn English and Spanish at the same time, growing up here in the city of Boston, having adults that speak your language, that look like you, that are from your neighborhood, makes a huge difference to our BPS students. So right now, I'm glad to see that the St. Stevens Mentoring Program will be fully funded and will continue to advocate for that. I love the investments we're making on inclusion. I love the, I know that our facilities in general are so old, but really believe in this administration and our Superintendent Mary Skipper in terms of the investments that they're making for our future. So, you know, we need to continue to invest in our children, in our students here. And I think that this budget, although not perfect, like no budget is ever perfect, I do think that reflects the needs that our students need right now and that's why I'll be voting in support of it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor Santana. The Chair recognizes Councillor Mejia. Councillor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair for his work in this space. So I'm just going to first start off by just laying down the groundwork here for you all for what it looks like to be a community organizer and to really utilize our political capital to fight for the things that we know community wants, especially in the education space. As a BPS graduate, as a BPS mom and as a BPS agitator, I don't believe that BPS is really meeting the moment that this time is requiring. So to put a budget up for approval when we could still have a little bit of leverage to fight for in other aspects, I just don't know from a strategic standpoint, putting it up for a vote today makes sense, but that's all about strategy, which we also have to learn how to develop. But I want to be clear that when I first came onto the scene, Councillor then Anissa Savi George was the Chair of Education and under her leadership, while our politics never really aligned, she at least hosted 26 hearings in her committee in education in regards to BPS. So we had opportunities to really dive deep into the issues that impact education and that was as the Education Chair, not the Ways and Means. And so what I have seen here over the last five to six years on this iteration of the body is then Councillor Wu, now Mayor Wu, never approved any of the budgets that came through this body. But here we are, lining up, yes, ma'am, let's go with it and delivering what I think is a disservice to the people that we're here to fight for. But it's politics and what can we say? I am very grateful for the investments in St. Stevens, the parenting mentoring program. In fact, I was the councillor that fought for that amendment in my tenure when I first came onto the scene here on the council and I fought for it fiercely because not only was I a parent advocate, I was a parent who went through that program and saw my organizing capabilities increase by participating in that initiative and fought for that during the budget process. So I'm really happy to stand here and congratulate us for seeing that reflected here. But at the same time, when it comes to the issues of White Stadium and the investments, when it comes to Madison Park, when it comes to family and community engagement, when it comes to progress and processes for educators and folks to feel heard and affirmed, we have not made enough investments to hold ourselves accountable to real processes that make parents feel like their voice matters when we are closing schools left and right. And I know those are difficult decisions that the mayor is making during an election year, so I'm sure that in terms of narrative, it's going to suit somebody. But it's not supporting any of the families that are fighting against it. So it's really difficult for me to stand here and while I didn't say much on the operating budget because I'm picking and choosing how I utilize my political capital, I will say that we as a body really need to start thinking about how we're showing up in these times when it gives us an opportunity to be courageous and to push the administration and the superintendent to do a little bit more. And so I don't feel comfortable cosigning a budget at this point in this juncture, considering that we still that we still have a lot of to-be-ds as it relates to the budgeting process, because this is just round one. We still have three more weeks to go until we get to the finish line. So budgets that, votes that we took today doesn't necessarily mean anything. Come the end of the month, we'll all see where things land, right? And so I think it's really important for us to be thoughtful and strategic about our political capital here, and right now, I don't think that BPS, given all of the discrepancies that we've heard, because we do listen to people, that we're in a good place to pass this budget today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Kalata Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I first just want to give again a shout out to Counselor Worwell, who I think, to my knowledge, was the first Chair of Ways and Means to have BPS come in before the budget, and so I just want to shout out you in that regard, and that was the first time that I got a chance to, we got a chance to start trying to get our priorities into this particular budget. So I thought that that was excellent foresight on your behalf, so I want to shout out Counselor Worwell again. I want to shout out our principals, our teachers, our administrators. I met with all of my district principals this past spring, and it was awesome to hear about their priorities, their perspective, and get their insights on their own school community. Without the overseers of BPS in the room, I got a lot of transparent conversations, and so I appreciate that. We talked a lot about inclusion, and while there was some great steps within the BTU contract, there's still some, there's some work to be done as it relates to that. But overall, I will be voting yes on this budget. It's thanks to the hard work of our teachers, principals, and administrators, and I did look up the data on this, District One region has the highest performing schools in the city, and that is something to be proud of. We have a student and family population that is culturally, linguistically, and socio-economically diverse with the highest needs percentage in the city, and the challenges, like I said, still remain, and this includes opportunity gaps that is going to take many years to rectify. There are long-term facility needs, but I am pleased to see some of the Green New Deal initiatives that are taking place, but I'm proud of my region, and I want to shout out Superintendent Skipper, as well as Assistant Superintendent Tommy Welsh, who I call way too much, but he's so accessible and so responsive, and he's gotten a lot of things done for my district. The goal is not to be satisfied by this. We've seen tremendous success in our schools, which is why I'll be voting yes for this budget, but we still intend to keep pushing, and there's a couple of reasons why I'm voting yes on this budget. I got a coffee with Superintendent Skipper when she first got in 2024. I brought up a couple of key initiatives that I pushed needed to be met with urgency, and within three years, she's delivered on almost all of them. Number one, the city was in desperate need of a relief valve for our multilingual learners at East Boston High School and at Charlestown High. Boston Adult Technical Academy, BADA, and Binka is just way too far away for some of the kids, especially in East Boston, and there was limited seats, and so we needed a way to provide more space for these kids who just wanted to learn English and gain professional and technical skills. Within three years, BADA Easty is open and serving hundreds of young adults learning English and other general education subjects, as well as those skills to advance themselves in and contribute productively to society. Number two, in 2022, sponsored a hearing, order exploring ways to integrate climate and environmental justice curriculum into all K through 12 schools. It's essential that we are educating the next generation of environmental stewards about the local impacts of a climate crisis, of the climate crisis. And so there were many conversations, we had a couple of hearings. In partnership with BPS and the BTU, we identified the last step was bringing in teachers' perspectives and embedding it into the BTU contract, and that's currently something that's being set up. There's a committee to review this, and it will be happening. And the last, the last reason, it's not the last, there's many reasons, but this is probably the most important, is Charlestown High. I've met with dozens of parents at the Harvard Kent, Warren Prescott, the Elliott School, the Allegary, and many other schools in my district. Parents are worried about general education options for high school. There are incredible initiatives taking place at Charlestown High School, and I want to give kudos to Principal Trevetti for his leadership. With additional seats freed up due to the inclusion model and the opening of BADA East, there is an opportunity to capitalize on some of the open spaces in the general education portion at Charlestown High School and reimagining what that Gen Ed program looks like while planning for the inclusion of the kids that are there specifically within the robust special education program. In meeting with Superintendent Skipper and Tommy Welsh, I can say that great things are on the horizon for the district, but especially Charlestown High. Back in 2014, East Boston High School was a Tier Three school, and thanks to a push of, and an influx of resources, investments, and directions under Principal Bernd Forti, the school is now one of the top-performing schools in the district, and it's a school on the move. That is basically where Charlestown High School is right now. And so a similar initiative is what's next for Charlestown High. There will be an exciting announcement forthcoming about a thoughtful community engagement initiative with a goal of creating a cohesive pathway within the neighborhood, which will ultimately provide positive academic outcomes for our students. And so I'm super excited about this. This is what hundreds of parents have been asking for, and I'm looking forward to working with parents and the school community at Charlestown High School to best reflect what their needs and their desires are for that particular school community. Issues remain, there's no doubt about it, but for those reasons and the broad support that my district is getting, I will be voting yes on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an issue that I've debated about for a period of time, whether I would support the budget or whether I would not support the budget. I've always supported the BPS budget, in fact, but this year I had a different reason to consider all the options. But the one issue that really is the deciding factor for me in support of the BPS budget is the leadership of the Superintendent. I have disagreed with her on, at times. I have challenged BPS on many issues, but I still think and still believe that she's a good Superintendent, working at a very challenging and difficult urban environment. I feel like I have to, or I should, give my support to this struggling school system. I need to continue to work with the Superintendent within the system to improve schools in my district and outside of my district. I worked with the Superintendent and Mayor Walsh and Mayor Wu on the Carter School. I think it's, I think it's the best school in the city of Boston, and I know it provides tremendous support to students with disabilities. I'm also the parent of a child that went to BPS his entire life at Josiah Quincy and at Boston Latin. Yes, I disagree with the BPS team on their transportation plan. I don't feel like we have the leadership in place necessary at the Transportation Department at BPS, and I'd like to see major structural change. I've advocated for a receivership for BPS transportation. I'm very uncomfortable with the current condition right now of BPS transportation. I'm going to continue to challenge BPS on public transportation. I want to acknowledge Counselor Murphy, your leadership on that. But as the district counselor from District Two, obviously representing a large number of students, especially from public housing, I have an obligation to continue to work within the system to ensure that my constituents have the best opportunities possible, whether it's academic support, whether it's social services, whether it's support for our immigrant families as well. So, again, that my main reason in voting in favor of the budget is strictly based on the competence and professionalism that I've experienced working with the BPS Superintendent, knowing that we still have major, significant challenges ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin? Counselor Durkin, yep.
Thank you so much, Council President. I was proud to hear my colleague from District Two, because that was, that's exactly my sentiment. I, I really appreciate Superintendent Skipper's leadership. I appreciate her connection and care for the city council. I appreciate the fact that she spends her time wondering and communicating what is happening in our districts and getting to represent Fenway High School, the Snowden, Boston Arts Academy, Boston Latin, EMK for Health Careers, so many of the schools that, that, you know, people from around the city go to for specialized and important educational opportunities. When I first came onto the city council, I, you know, got feedback from former counselors and others, don't focus on the schools, you represent District Eight, you don't have very many of them. But getting to, I know I was at the Val Victorian luncheon at Fenway Park, getting to see our BPS kids and the promise and opportunity that they represent, it was just an emotional experience. Getting to see people from around the world who ended up in Boston. It was like a third of the Val Victorians had grown up in another place and had moved to Boston. We, our BPS kids are immigrants, they're people of color, there are people from around the city, there are people from around the world. It's, we have such an opportunity in Boston to, to make sure that their lights continue to shine beyond their education, and I, I need to be a part of that as a city counselor, as one of the 13 city counselors representing Boston. So the last year, I've really dug in and tried to meet the heads of school and met with the Superintendent and attended a lot of events that in my first year I didn't, and I just want to show my commitment to continue to be a partner with BPS on sports, on everything that I care about in my district, and connecting schools with opportunity and with institutions, and I'm proud of this budget. I know that we're not the school committee, we don't have the same powers on this budget as we do on others, but I believe in the Superintendent, I believe in our mayor, I believe in our school system, and I believe we do need to make some changes, and those changes are really, a really important factor in actually lifting up the educational opportunities for everyone in the city, and I think our mayor has shown her willingness to do that, and I will be a partner in those changes that need to be made. So, thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernanda Jensen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I think, I think there's different issues here that, there are different issues here that needs to eventually be sorted out or figured out, and I think that the biggest issue is equity. When you look at the different schools, for example, that my council colleague named, she represents, you know, Beacon Hill, Back Bay, those areas, and you have schools that are well-performing. I mean, I attended Snowden my freshman year, so very familiar, and, but then when you compare it to schools in Roxbury, for example, it's not that, you know, the black kids that are going to Roxbury are underperforming or less smart, right? You have poor facilities, poor conditions, with less funding and less investments. But areas where we know that more affluent white counterparts live in Beacon Hill and Back Bay, downtown, those areas, then they continue to be funded, and the other schools in the black communities and poor communities are historically disenfranchised and continue to be disenfranchised. So I think that, you know, you have examples like Madison Park, for example, where the Friends of Madison have fought long and hard and continue to fight to advocate for Madison Park, and then there were like arguments as to, or points that were made by the administration as to why it was postponed and not prioritized for investment. And so investments, and then they, they took it back, they said, no, we don't, we can't afford to just put $900 million into this school, this redevelopment or development of this new facility, but we, we are going to postpone it, we are, which makes sense, obviously, if you don't have enough of the capital and you have to figure out where else to put it. But we were having these conversations at the very beginning of my tenure, you know, 2022, we were already talking about how inequitable this budget was and how the capital funds could have been used. I remember Council President filed something to, you know, to look at alternative ways of using capital bonds, bond funds in housing, for example. And so then I created this idea, I met with Counselor, and I'm going to connect it with housing, sorry, sometimes I go too fast. I met with Sheila Dillon, the Chief of Housing, and I said, you know, beyond the programs that I've already created, and I see a lot of my colleagues doing and trying, being creative on programmatic results for inequities in their district or with their offices, we've all hired or collaborated with SuccessLink and hired folks. You guys know that I, you know, we passed the resolution on, that I filed on school partnership with colleges and doing homework-paid programs with SuccessLink. And then I went on to doing civic ambassadors and collaborating with other programs, but then I collaborated with RCC, and Sheila Dillon said, you know, Chief Dillon said, you know, this is the first that I've ever heard of this idea. Then I heard the mayor at the state of the city say that she is going to create the very program that I created months ago. So, I mean, it's politics, you know, why did the mayor reject the budget? Same reason why you're rejecting a budget today, like, it's political. If you disagree with the mayor, then you take a stand and you say no to the BPS budget, but does it mean that, you know, it's going to be, is it an effective move? Sure, politically, you could take a stance, you could leverage it, if you could actually leverage it, if you find enough votes. There aren't enough votes here to leverage it, to be able to say, like, this is, this needs to stop so that we can like sort of maybe get an elected school committee, you know, after the 78% on the referendum, the non-Biden referendum, to get an elected school committee? Or maybe it's leveraging something else, like more facilities in black communities that actually support, again, the success, academic success of our children. What I believe is that BPS, and I agree with my colleagues, that the Superintendent, the current Superintendent, Mary Skipper, is doing an excellent job. I believe that, I believe that wholeheartedly. I've met with her, I've gone through the, gone through the website, like, I've done what you guys have done, met with her, gone through the curriculum, and I understand this stuff because, you know, I'm CANS certified and I used to do a lot of work with, you know, IEPs, and so understand wholeheartedly full inclusion and what that means. And also have reference in terms of my children, now they don't attend this school, I can say this, they attended Western, Western public schools, and so that comparison between facility in Boston and like a Western schools is like huge. And so I would, I would look at that, and I would look at performance, and I would look at, you know, how kids here are working with foster children and my own clients in CBHI services and comparing how their performance, it was really not about, this budget really is not about like, oh, it doesn't speak to the issue or safety, or we have all these problems. Yeah, we have all these issues that the mayor is trying to work on, like no mayor, nobody does, wants unsafe transportation or kids to be unsafe, like, this mayor wants kids to achieve, is she going about it the right way? I think that we are, it's a work in progress, and it's going to, it's eventually, I think it's going to, we're making progress with Mary Skipper, and I think eventually it's going to evolve and it's going to get bigger. But I also think that it's inequitable, but I think that it takes years of this, you know, hopefully steady progress to get there. So that's why, like, even if I disagree with the mayor and I look at, you know, the map and I say this is inequitable and she's not prioritizing a certain thing, and some of these decisions are very political for her, sure. However, I do believe that there's intention here to address the issue, and I don't think anyone here wants our children to be unsafe. So I will be, with all that being said, I will be voting in support and to my constituents that, again, the only reason why I'm here to address this budget is to say, look, through this advocacy, I think it's to continue to be able to hold the administration accountable so that Madison Park School is not forgotten, so that, you know, Talia and, you know, Lou Mandarini is actually working with Madison Park Principal, we have an amazing principal there that continues to work and advocate for the students there. While we're waiting for the money, it doesn't mean forget the kids there. So what are the kids there, like, you know, chopped liver, like, we're just going to wait? We're just going to not address the facility? When we couldn't move O'Brien, then the mayor said to the community, oh, well, I'm just not going to fix the facility, and then you'll have to wait about five years before we do that. Like, that's not how we respond to things. There is a better approach, there is another way of addressing constituents, of saying, of involving them and engaging them in a transparent way, in a more intentional way of listening and engaging constituents and saying, look, maybe we can do this gradually, it's not realistic to do it all at once, but we don't just but we don't just ignore kids in school or facilities because we're not going to create this big facility where we please the unions and the electric and whatever unions are going to collaborate and benefit from this facility. What, who, what is it about? Is it about kids? Is it about unions? Is it about politics? All of that is involved. And the media can take it away and do whatever they want with it. The point here is that we have to be honest about the conversation, about the state of the budget and how we prioritize our schools. And the fact of the matter is that black and brown children and working class, white children too, the poor ones in Roxbury, Dorchester, Mattapan, also are not being prioritized when it comes to school investments. But the show must go on, we have a good principle, good program, let's keep trying, let's keep moving forward. I will vote in support and hopefully next year you guys will have better success. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frances Anderson. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be supporting this, this, this school budget. I think, as many have mentioned, that this, you know, we are making progress. Progress is slow, but we are making progress. Alston Brighton has a wonderful school community. The schools that we have, all the school leaders, the school communities collaborate and talk to each other and support each other. I am very envious of the model that they have in East Boston and we're hoping to replicate that in District Nine, because we're sort of the bookends of Boston. She's, Councilor Coletta Zapata's out in East Boston, we're out in Alston Brighton. So I am hopeful and excited with the direction that we're headed. There's this notion that Alston Brighton doesn't have kids, but anyone who goes to the Easter egg hunt or any of the community events that has, have children, we have lots of children. And we want those kids to stay in the city. The pattern over the last, since I've been in Alston Brighton in the last 30 years is that kids get to be a certain height and then everybody leaves and then you have, you know, and it's very sad. And we want to see those families stay. We need to work on housing that's affordable and suitable for families. We need to work on investing in our parks and place spaces. We also need to work in improving our schools. And that's work in progress. And I, and we are making progress, as I say. I'm also very excited about the notion that we can build strong community and school connections and collaborations and partnerships across our district. Being geographically removed from the rest of the city, we have to sort of rely on our connections with our neighbors and, and work on developing that infrastructure. It builds resilience, it builds strong partnerships that are actually paying dividends. We're really excited that there's a local group organizing around sports for young people. That, since COVID, has been really challenging. We, our little league had sort of fallen apart completely there for a few years, but it's all, we, we're starting to build that up again. We're also working with, again, the community center is a critical piece of the community infrastructure in Alston Brighton. So it's almost like an ecosystem that supports our young people to grow and develop, to achieve their full potential. And Boston Public Schools is a very important part of that. And so I will be voting in favor of this budget. I also want to thank out, a shout out to all the school leaders in Alston Brighton, they work together and collaborate, and all the dedicated teaching staff and support, and support staff who give, give their all to our students every day in, in my district and across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Murphy. Councilwoman Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise again to state that I push back because I care and also because I'm not okay with only 20% of our black and Latino third graders reading proficiently. And that number only goes up to 22% in fourth grade. And of our 31 high schools, that are Valedictorians, the number one in their class, only 25% of, 25% of our Valedictorians do not successfully graduate from college. We're not preparing the majority of our students for life after high school. And that, to me, is what keeps me up at night and what bothers me. Our students, our children, the next generation of city leaders deserve so much better. I'll continue every day to advocate for our students while I also continue to support and advocate our school leaders, our teachers, our students, our families. But it's not okay when 80% of our black and Latino students are not getting the education they need and they're continuing to be pushed along.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I just want to say that I echo a lot of the sentiments of my colleagues and I'll be voting yes in support of this budget, in that I think that the work of urban education is extremely difficult and no one should allude themselves that it's otherwise. A lot of our kids walk into school every day with issues that kids in other districts, students and teachers in other districts don't have to deal with. And they have the luxury of teaching students who are, you know, not poor and who don't have parents, who are not native English speakers. And so I just want to recognize the challenges. And I also think it's important for us to look at Boston compared to other large cities, not to say that we don't have issues because we absolutely do, but we are outperforming other, other cities that have similar populations. And so I think, I don't know if it was Councilwoman Santana who mentioned this, from day one, I thought that one of the BPS's weakest points is that they don't do a good job of advocating their successes. And they need more, more of those successes. We need to be doing more work on building school buildings because the physical structure of our schools is reflective of our policy decisions and a reflective of how we value our kids. What Councilwoman Braden was saying on, you know, our debt capacity is also true for the investments that we're making in our schools. And we can be doing more of the work of building new schools, of updating our facilities, of making sure that the bathrooms that our staff and our schools have to use are decent bathrooms by leaning more into our fiscal strength as a city. And so I'm encouraging BPS to continue doing that work. I think, you know, we also had unprecedented challenges in terms of absorbing new arrivals into our school district and trying to do that in the best way possible. There have been tremendous investments in the SLIF program, students limited or formal with limited or interrupted formal education. There has been investments, I, I do think it's a, it's a really big deal, the investments in the partnership, bless you, between Madison Park and the unions and making sure that our kids will be able to get slots in the trades and that we'll make sure that we're doing the work of building new schools. And, you know, not to say that there isn't a lot of work to do, but I do think that the staff and our superintendent do recognize the challenges. And there are many. But as a BPS student myself, as someone who went to some schools that are considered great schools and some schools that are currently considered the underperforming schools, schools that my family members still go to, I think the issue, again, is, is complicated and complex. I do really appreciate how much this body has really uplifted and supported investments in social workers and family liaisons and school counselors so that we can deal with all of the other issues that our students, predominantly black and brown, predominantly low income, a good percentage of whom are not native English speakers, can get their other needs attended to, which is why things like the access to council program that Council Weber has been championing is so important, to make sure that housing instability is not an issue that our kids are facing. So I recognize the challenges and I recognize the deep, deep equity issues that we still need to deal with in our schools. But I do think that very slowly we are hopefully moving in the right direction and I will be supporting this budget. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay, thank you. The chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, oh, is anybody else looking to speak? Sorry. No? Okay. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Councilor Brian Woreau, seeks passage of docket number 0823. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0823. Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta Zapata. Councilor Coletta Zapata, yes. Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, yes. Councilor Frances Anderson. Councilor Frances Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald. Councilor Fitzgerald, yes. Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Louise Jean. Councilor Louise Jean, yes. Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, no. Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, no. Councilor Peppin. Councilor Peppin, yes. Councilor Santana. Councilor Santana, yes. Councilor Weber. Councilor Weber, yes. And Councilor Woreau. Councilor Woreau, yes. Docket number 0823 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0823 has passed. Okay, so we did motions, orders and resolutions. But before we move on to green sheets, would anyone like to add their name to a docket or a vote or motion to reconsider a vote before we move on to green sheets? No? Okay, awesome. We are now moving on to green sheets. Does anyone have anything to pull from the green sheets? The chair recognizes Councilwoman Peppin. Councilwoman Peppin, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. I was just made aware of this one. It's docket number 0846. I was not given the page number.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, you could just give, what, is it in the City Services? Is it in City Services?
Community Preservation Act.
Okay, it's in the Community Preservation Act Committee and the docket again is 0846, Mr. Clerk. So let's just give him some time to find the docket.
Page three.
Yes, Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the docket?
From the Committee on Community Preservation Act, docket number 0846. Message in order approving an appropriation of $1,554,228 for the administrative and operating expenses of the City of Boston Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2026. Any further appropriation order in the amount of $35,235,992 from the Community Preservation Fund. Estimated annual revenues for fiscal year 2026 to be appropriated and reserved for future
Okay, thank you. Okay, absent objection. The motion of the committee chair is accepted and the docket is properly before the body. Mr. Uh, Mr. Clerk, Councilman Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I urge my council colleagues to vote on this appropriation that funds the administrative and operating expenses of the City of Boston Preservation Committee, as well as the coming year's budget is reserved for recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee. These appropriations are funded pursuant to the Community Preservation Act. The community appropriation is for $1,554,228. And the reserve appropriation for projects is $35,235,992. Once the Community Preservation Committee decides on projects to fund, this part of the appropriation will come back to the council for a hearing. I know we promote and advocate for CPA grant throughout the city as it is truly a grant opportunity for large funds to impactful projects. Director Thaddeus Brown and her team are incredibly responsive and helpful in making sure our neighborhoods can apply and learn more as we continue supporting them in the future projects to come. So we had the hearing already for the community preservation grants that were allocated for FY '25. This is now to allow the staff to, obviously, continue to be funded, but also for the reserves of next year's projects. So, and then that's when we will have the hearing for, to listen what those projects are and allow the, the Community Preservation Department to go through those, those applicants. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Peppin. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the chair as well, to Councilor Peppin for bringing this forward. I also want to highlight and thank Thaddeus Brown. I've had the opportunity to work with her for a number of years. And what I see in her and her team is professionalism, hardworking staff, that really brings out the best in the residents of Boston. And what Thaddeus and the team also does is they listen and they work with people and they don't have all the answers. And if they don't have all the answers, they'll help you get the answers and they'll get back to you. If you're not successful with a CPA award, Thaddeus, Thaddeus and her team will sit down with the applicants that weren't winners and go over the application and provide them good, honest feedback. But I do like to highlight the incredible and professional role of city employees every time I get that opportunity. And this is the opportunity I do want to take to acknowledge Thaddeus Brown for her professional work that she has provided to the residents of Boston for so many years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I think I saw the order here. I think it was Councilwoman Braden and then I'm not sure if it was Councilor Coletta Zapata or Councilwoman Murphy, but, Councilwoman Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted that we're, we're voting on this to get the money out the door to the awardees this year and setting up the infrastructure to support the process next year. I want to echo Councilor Flynn's congratulations and gratitude to Thaddeus Brown. I think the Community Preservation Act team do a great job, it's very efficient. They engage with community and support maybe small organizations guiding a project through the process. So this is very exciting, again, another over $35 million going towards projects across the city for historical preservation, affordable housing and green space. And we have benefited from these grants in the past in Alston Brighton. And I look forward to supporting further applications this year in the coming year, years round. All the work that we did to get this passed is well worth it and I think we're, we're really seeing that the, the efforts to establish a, a community preservation process here in, in Boston has been very enthusiastically supported and engaged, has engaged a lot of community across the city. So excited to do this and hope that we can continue to see some more great projects coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. This office and this work is so meaningful to me. I actually met former councillor, councillor Kenzie Bach, who met with me about trying to get CPA on the ballot. And now it's just one of the most successful things that the City of Boston does. And this year's grant funding was no different, from Ruggles Baptist Church in Audubon Circle to Hill House in Beacon Hill and all of the pieces of District Eight in between, there are just some amazing projects that were funded this year. And there was a typo when I first came onto the city council that I was going to be the chair of CPA. And I wonder how my time on the Boston City Council would be different if I had had that chairmanship. But I appreciate, I really, really appreciate the opportunity to get to send those letters and I appreciate so much the opportunity to support preservation of historic buildings and open space and affordable housing. Those are three priorities that District Eight and I share and values that I share and with the whole City of Boston. So thank you to the chair, I'm excited to vote in support of this.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Murphy. Councilwoman Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I have to say, Councilor Durkin, I was surprised when Councilor Peppin stood up because I thought you were the chair of that. So, but thank you for bringing this forward. Thaddeus, it's been said, but her personally and her staff do a wonderful job. And she works with neighborhoods, but, you know, also individuals, making sure that individuals and groups, if they need extra support, to go back and to never give up. Councilor Flynn and I were with Thaddeus recently at the ribbon cutting of a new baseball field in South Boston. And she, you know, shows up to all these wonderful projects that we fund and it's just great to see her and her team being able to celebrate the hard work they do. But I also want to recognize former councillor Michael Flaherty, who, one of the first pieces of advice he gave me when I came on the council to work alongside him was to make sure I showed up to the, you know, CPA hearings, because in December of my first few weeks here, we were having Zoom hearings still back then during COVID, but we were listening to community groups and advocating for these great projects. So it's a great way, especially for an at-large councillor, to really get into the different communities and see what the different neighborhoods are advocating for. So thank you to our former colleague, Councilor Flaherty, for always advocating and uplifting this department and for Thaddeus and her team for doing great work. And congratulations every year to all of the wonderful projects that get funded.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I just want to echo, my, my colleagues, CPA is great, open space, affordable housing, historic preservation, Thaddeus Brown is incredible, the work that we get to do in partnership with community, especially in multiple languages to make sure people know about access to these grants. especially in multiple languages to make sure people know about access to these grants, is awesome. So, Counselor Peppin seeks passage of docket number 0846. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. We are now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are 21 late file matters.
Sixteen.
Sixteen personnel orders.
Three.
Three from the mayor. Oh, and, and so, uh, so three from the mayor, and one from, one late file communication. Late file communication, two late file communications. Okay. We will take a vote to add the 16 personnel orders to the record. All in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These matters have been added into the record. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the late file personnel matters into the record?
So, 16 personnel orders. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Braden. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Durkin. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Flynn. Counselor Louie Jean. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Braden. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Durkin. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Flynn. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Durkin. Counselor Louie Jean. Counselor Louie Jean. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Orell. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Peppin. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Murphy. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Weber. Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Murphy. And Counselor Louie Jean for Counselor Weber. Those are the 16 late filed matters for personnel orders.
Thank you. We will now take a vote to add these, to pass these late file personnel orders. All in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These personnel orders have passed. Okay, we are now on to the three late file matters from the mayor. Mr. Clerk, could you please, can you read them, you can read them together?
Three late file matters from the mayor. First one is a hereby transmit for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a monetary donation of $5,000 donated by the Boston Fund. The purpose of this donation is to support the Mayor's Civic Summit, which will occur on June 7th, 2025. Second late file matter from the mayor, I transmit for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a monetary donation of $15,000 donated by cities forward. The purpose of this donation is to support the Mayor's Civic Summit, which will occur on June 7th, 2025. And the third late file from the mayor, I transmit for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation of food and event space valued at $38,000 donated by Boston University. The purpose of this donation is to support Mayor's Civic Summit, which will occur June 7th, 2025.
Thank you. Take a vote to add these late file matters onto the record. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This, these matters have been added onto the record. The chair recognizes Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Chair of the City Services Technology Innovation Committee, I, looking at these grants and what they will do for this weekend's Mayor's Civic Summit, this is an opportunity for a lot of our neighborhood associations and civic leaders to come together under one roof, to go over shared practices of organizing and how they can better communicate amongst themselves and the City of Boston. I believe civic leaders from across all of our districts and across our city will be in attendance, and I think that, I recommend that these, that these donations all pass today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Peppin. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counselor Peppin, the Chair of the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technologies, expansion of the rules and passage of these three late file dockets. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These dockets have passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the first late file communication matter into the record?
Late file communication, emergency late file communicated offered by Counselor Erin Murphy, reciting Transdev.
We will take a vote to add this late file communication onto the record. All those in favor say aye? All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This matter has been added onto the record. Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the matter into the record? Could you just do the first? Oh, okay. All right, cool. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor. Counselor, Mr. Clerk had read it into the record, so.
He did. No, thank you. I don't need to speak on it. I referenced it when I was talking about the BPS budget, but I just wanted it on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the next late file communic, communication matter? Oh, the emergency letter, that emergency letter will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the next late file communication onto the record?
Communication from the Elections Department pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 53, Section 18A. I transmit for your approval of citizens' petition entitled "In the Interest of Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility Should the City of Boston Establish Municipal Independent Office of Inspector General." And this was filed by the Commissioner Anita Taviras, Board of Elections.
Uh, thank you. We will take a vote to add this late file communication onto the record. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This matter has been added onto the record. The clerk recognizes Counselor Mejia. As this is a communication limited to two minutes. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to be really clear for the record. We are not taking a vote on this matter today, colleagues, so do not worry. We're just allowing democracy to play out. Just to be clear, the, the full communication here is pursuant to GLC 53, some scribble dibble, 18A. I transmit for your approval, a citizen's petition entitled "In the Interest of Government Accountability and Transparency and Accessibility," should the Boston.
Sorry.
Yeah, but I, I just want to just be really clear about what this is. It is a opinion advisory question, in advocating for it to go on the next municipal election, which will occur on November the 4th. So, I just want to be clear that we know what it is that we are introducing here.
Counselor Mejia, I just wanted to, just because I heard the stenographer. When you said scribble dibble, you mean that section sign? Is that right?
I don't even know how to say what that is.
Yeah, but it's a section sign, so that's what it is.
Ellen, you know me.
It's a section sign. I heard, so I just wanted to clarify for Ellen. It's a section sign, yeah.
It's a scribble dibble to me. I don't know what you call it in America, but it's a section.
It's a section sign, yeah.
The petition includes signatures from about 30 folks. We only needed 10. And I just want to be really clear, this is just an opportunity for us to explore many pathways towards the work that Counselor Coletta and myself, alongside Counselor Orell and Counselor Anderson are doing, to strengthen FinCom. So, just do not be alarmed. Do not be alarmed. Do not be alarmed.
The, this is a communication. Yeah, we're, we're just, we're going to refer to your committee, to the Committee on Government Operations. Okay, thank you. This matter will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Okay, we are now on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. I don't have any birthdays on here, but if anyone has a birthday, happy birthday. Yes, the Scooper Bowl is outside. I love the Scooper Bowl. And I also wanted to say that Sisnel Baez in my office, and formerly in Counselor Mejia's office, will be transitioning to the administration to doing, be doing work on supplier diversity. So, I just want to wish Sisnel Baez, in my office, congratulations, and thank you for being such a, a joy and a great part of our team. We will be having cake afterwards. If anyone is around, it's ice cream cake that has since melted. But if you would like to have some cake to celebrate Sisnel with us, please join us. The chair recognizes Counselor, I'll go around the horseshoe. Counselor Cala Zepata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't know that about Sisnel. Congratulations. She was a staffer. When I was a staffer, and I love seeing city council staff just continue to shine, shine bright, and so congratulations. My main announcement is about Charlestown Pride Week. It is the best week of the year in 02129. There are events every single day. I definitely recommend all of my at-large colleagues joining us for all of the festivities. It is the 250th anniversary of the Bunker Hill Battle, which is the bunker, the Battle of Breed's Hill, actually. And there's, there's a ton of historical events, kids for, events for kids. Sorry, it's been a long meeting, and I need water. But there's plenty of activities for the entire family, and to please go online and follow me on social media, as well as the Bunker Hill Associates, the Charlestown Preservation Society, the Historical Society, all of that, and hope to see you in our lovely green square mile. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I wanted to invite all my colleagues, for starters, to go see the Callaghan Rose Garden, which will be in bloom next week, if it's not already. I'm sure it is. But next Wednesday, 6 to 8, is the Fenway Civic Association Rose Garden Picnic. Hundreds of people come to this, so it should be a really good thing for the Fenway counselors, and then any at-large counselors that would like to be there. So, just wanted to make sure everyone knew about that event, which Fenway Civic Association puts on with a lot of love and care. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. There's some, there are three amazing events happening this weekend in District 5. First is the Mata Hunt Woods Spring Cleanup, happening on Colorado Street. That starts at 10:00 in the morning. Then, we have the Daddy and Me Event at the Martinelli Show in Hyde Park. That's the fourth iteration of that event. And then, a very important event in my district is the opening day for the Rosendale Farmers' Market. That is one of the, I'm biased, it's one of the best farmers' market in the entire city. I encourage, yeah, I won't say anything about that, Rosendale's still number one. I encourage everyone to stop by for that opening day, as it is truly a very beautiful, diverse event that everyone loves in Rosendale. So, I'll see you all there.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any additional announcements? Okay. We are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to uplift a name? I just want to make sure that we recognize Leana Tran of EMS. The EMS community is mourning her passing, and so I just want us to remember Leana Tran, and her life, and her dedication to the City of Boston. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to uplift the memory of Louise Bonar. Louise passed away in January, but we're having her memorial center in, in Brighton on Sat, on Friday afternoon. She, she was an educator, a journalist, and has an amazing, long, and productive life. She was involved, she was one of the families, she was, she was participated in further education and earned a master's from the urban teaching, a degree, urban, a degree in urban teaching from Simmons University in 1969, with a design, which was designed with the support of Boston activist Mel King. Louise taught in elementary school in Roxbury and served a predominantly black student population. In the 1970s, she and other parents in, in Brighton were instrumental in forming a model demonstration subsystem, a pioneer magnet school program that promoted voluntary desegregation and inclusion across Boston City School Districts, specifically serving Alston-Brighton, Mission Hill, and the Fenway. Her work in this initiative is preserved in the Northeastern University and the Burns Library at Boston College. When I came to the district first, she had me over to her house with another friend of hers who was very involved with the League of Women Voters, and they sat me down at her dining room table and says, "What are you going to do about the BRA?" I had just arrived in the neighborhood. I didn't have any clue what the BRA was, but they were giving me a 101 on the BRA. And she was very involved in lots of our community institutions, including the Fannie Louise Library, which she worked to preserve and keep open. And the other thing, I, yeah, I think she was just an amazing person. When I was running for office, she used to, like, she's in her, in her late 80s, she would come over with newspaper clippings out of the newspaper and says, "Oh, your opponent is saying this," or so-and-so's doing that, and just kept me up to date with all that was going on in the political world in Boston. And she's, she's greatly missed in the neighborhood, and we'll be all joining together to honor her memory on Friday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. So, I want to rise and send my sincere condolences to the Pola family. We lost a giant this week, Carmen Pola, who was a fierce advocate in Mission Hill and across the City of Boston. Passed away this week. The Pola family relocated to Boston after coming here from Puerto Rico and living in California for a short period of time. Came here in 1972, settling in the neighborhood of Mission Hill. Pola quickly became involved in community activism, helping to organize tenants in Mission Hill, incorporating a class action lawsuit, Perez versus the Boston Housing Authority, to force the City of Boston to compile, comply with existing sanctuary codes. She was one of the plaintiffs also in a lawsuit brought by the Parents Committee for Defense to defend bilingual education, Comité de los Padres por la Prode Defendencia de la Educación Bilingüe, Morgan versus Kerrigan, in response to desegregation policies that threaten the viability of bilingual education programs in the Boston Public Schools. In 1975, she was the coordinator of the festival, the Puerto Rican Festival, which is held here annually in Boston since 1967. Pola was the coordinator also of the Community District Advisory Council, part of the City wide Parent Advisory Council, which operated from 1974 to 2004. And those were the years that I was a Boston Public School student, learning how to speak English with a mom who did not know how to advocate for me. And because of Ms. Pola and her fierce advocacy, I am here today. So, I wanted to just uplift her. She was also involved in the Bilingual Masters Parents Advisory Council, which oversaw the implementation of the Voluntary Lual Compliance Plan in 1979, which was an agreement outlined the responsibilities of the Boston Public Schools in providing edu, bilingual education to students. Needless to say, that Carmen did not take any shorts, if you will, here in the City of Boston. She was the first Latina to ever run for office statewide here in Massachusetts, and was a trailblazer. And because of her, many of us can say, especially those who struggled with English being their first language here, we see you, we thank you, we appreciate your fierce advocacy on behalf of so many families who migrated here during that era. We appreciate you, Carmen. We love you, and my sincere condolences to her family.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. She was indeed a legend and a transformative figure, and I want to extend my condolences to her family as well. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. A few weeks ago, West Roxbury lost Kathleen K. Ryan, who was 87. K was a longtime member of War 20, the War 20 Democratic Committee, and was an active participant in every aspect of life in West Roxbury for decades. She was the first female president of the West Roxbury Rosendale American Legion Baseball League, and also the first female president of the Parkway Babe Ruth Baseball League, in addition to every other commission, committee, neighborhood group in West Roxbury. And my thoughts are with K's family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Weber. There are two names that I met to read as well. Carol Timberlake, who many know from the, from Waverly Street over the years. Carol has been, was a lovely neighborhood resident who grew up. who grew up right there on Waverly Street. She was a lover of fashion and voice for MBTA customer service for many years. She was also a strong defender of the neighborhood, standing up to people who wanted to sell drugs on Waverly Street. And so, we just want to uplift her and regret for her work in neighborhood Roxbury and will miss her presence very much so. And then, a few weeks ago, William Baxter, Boston Police Department, police officer, passed away. And he grew up in Roxbury in the Orchard Gardens Development, when it was known as Orchard Park. He met his wife Gail growing up there. William, or Billy, as many people called him, made a career in law enforcement, working at the sheriff's office and later on the Boston Police Force. For many years, he worked at Roxbury precinct B2. He was often assigned to work with young people. He taught cooking lessons, as well as life lessons to neighborhood youth. And he did a number of youth programs at the Haley House or at the Boys and Girls Club in Roxbury. And in later years, he became an ordained minister. So, just want to make sure we remember those two community leaders today. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counselor Braden, Thomas F. McNally, Louise Bonard. On behalf of Counselor Mejia and Counselor Louie Jean, Carmen Paola. On behalf of myself, Counselor President Louie Jean, Carrie Osborne Jefferson. On behalf of myself and the entire Boston City Council, Boston EMS, Leana Tran. On behalf of myself, Carol Timberlake. And on behalf of myself and the entire Boston City Council, Boston Police Officer William Baxter. On behalf of Counselor Weber, Kathleen K. Ryan. A moment of silence. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the I and L chamber on Wednesday, June 11, 2025, at 12:00 noon. Thank you to my colleagues, to central staff, the clerk and the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned.